Good morning. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Mesa City Council Study Session for March the 21st. We have a lot of good stuff on the agenda today, so let's get started. All of our council is present. The first item for our meeting today is to hear a presentation, discuss and provide direction on the recommended conceptual master plan for the city-owned property at the southwest corner of University and Mesa Drives and the next steps for development of the property. Jeff, good to have you with us. Gentlemen, good to have you with us as well.
Good morning, Mayor. Counsel. I'm Jeff McBay, manager of Downtown Transformation. With me today is Don Arambula with Crandall Arambula, our prime consultant for the conceptual master plan of the Transform 17 site. Also with us is Alex Stokes with HRNA Advisors. They completed the market analysis and economic development analysis for the project as well. We have a lot of information we're going to try to go through quickly, so I'm going to hand this over really right now to Don to run through some background on how we got to where we are today and then as well to present our recommendation for concepts.
Will this one work?
Yes, that one.
Okay. So you can hear me fine?
Yes, sir.
Great. And you can spare with us for a second. I'm good, Jeff. And so we've got a quick slideshow that goes through that. Feel free to interrupt me if you've got a specific question on this, but I'd like to get through most of it and I think maybe some of the questions you might ask might be answered as we go through the presentation. So here's the overall agenda of what we want to talk about and we'll hit each one of these one at a time. So take a quick second to look at that. So this is generally where we're going. Really it's good to go back and look at what the project intent is. We've held this as a touchstone as we move through the project. So the idea was to look at three concepts, as you see there. You had some guiding principles that we've used as a driver in developing those concepts. And then finally, we've engaged robustly the surrounding community. So I think that's where we're at. So in summary, here are the guiding principles. Active environment, good neighborhood, varied district, strength in downtown, public accessible, and complimentary. And so as we went through this process, these were reviewed by the community and stakeholders and updated as necessary. So there were three touchstones that we had through the process. The first note is wrong. That's actually November 13th, January 29th, and here we are today. We had a meeting last night, by the way, with the steering committee and got their feedback as well. So here is the groups we talked to. A steering committee of about 50 people, a lot of stakeholder sessions, two community workshops, and we've met individually with council and board 17 times. The work has been online and it still is and will continue to be. And all the feedback that we got from each of those sessions is summarized there. For those who are listening, they can reach that information. In terms of the process, we didn't have any schemes. We started hat in hand, asking people what their issues and concerns were. Quite a few meetings, as you can see there. And the second meeting, we took that information and then formulated those three concepts. And so you see even better community attendance at the workshop from over 80-some to over 136. In terms of the conceptual master plan, this was what was presented. There was an overall access concept that you see all the elements there about connecting this into Main Street primarily and so it isn't out on the edge. And what we did find is that there was strong support for that. So you see, out of the people we asked through all those sessions, this was what it was. One thing I will say though is that we had some good input from Main Street. Main Street merchants, when we talk about retail and Transform 17 District, they wanted to be linked into it, tied to it. So we've suggested and discussed with them the possibility of extending our shared mobility loop. You see those pink dots, adding another one that goes over on Third Place down to McDonald. Then, moving on, we asked about some common...
I'm sorry. You invited us to interrupt you. Shared mobility loop, can you define that?
Yeah, it is a walking and biking access route that is separated from automobile traffic. So that would be in public right-of-way. And we've got fairly wide right-of-ways here and that would be like an eight-foot walking sidewalk and a 12-foot bike path separated, so you don't have the conflicts. And so that's really the concept of that. And also we would have shade on that and there would be some public art and lighting and other things like that. And so as we go through this, we'll talk about cost estimates and all of this has been identified for the Transform 17, but additional work and study would be required to really clarify this area.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So the common elements that we had and talked about, for the three, medium, medium-high, and high had four elements. And I'll go through each one of these and the response of those. So the idea here is to go with a historic grid. It's a last remaining piece of the neighborhood and often that is one of the most defining elements of it. And by the way, it also reduces your costs because you have a lot of infrastructure already in place there. So this was strongly supported. The other piece of this was trying to get a core of residential development as we move through this and Alex will touch on this a little bit. Residential is a prime component in establishing vibrancy and supporting other uses within the district. And that was supported within those blocks where you see the yellow. And then we identified areas that we said flex blocks. So the thought was here, you have the opportunity for adding other uses, office, hotels, and commercial and retail uses within those areas as well. And that was agreed to stakeholders as well. And then finally, this can't be just all about private development, but there needs to be amenities for those people who work, live in, and visit the areas and also for the neighborhoods to make some strong transitions between existing areas and link it. So you see those elements that were talked about as well. So that's supported. So with that, overall, just sort of basic fundamental common elements, we looked at the differences then. So the market intensity really reflects the market trend. The work that HRNA put together said this would be what the market would accept if you virtually did not a lot. And the second one is a little bit more adventuresome and more mix of use. And then the final one was the most intense of use. And so here's a community evaluation out of this. And I think the takeaway on this was that people didn't want just simply a housing neighborhood or a housing district. And that would be the medium market trend. They were desirous of maybe looking at more of a mixed-use district, looking at opportunities for employment, retail, entertainment. And so you see those trending towards the medium and medium-high. So that's kind of the takeaway out of that. Maybe we should take the medium off the table. So then what we did was to refine and assess some of the concepts and that is just finished. And I'm going to talk real briefly about the traffic assessment. As you go through and select one of these or a combination of some of these ideas, some additional traffic will be required as usual as any development proposal. But the takeaway that our subconsultant, CivTech, looked at is that you've got a lot of capacity today on your major arterial roadways. And the level of service at intersections, the congestion at those, at peak is nothing to... is a concern, but the additional development here won't substantially change that. So that was good news and there wouldn't necessarily need to be any additional signals. So what we're seeing with these, and it's a little bit counterintuitive, even as you get more density, the traffic volumes don't increase simply because you're adding destinations within the development. So if you've got residential development, we're talking about, for example, a grocery store, which is a significant traffic generator. People don't have to get in their car and drive out of it. So there's restaurants and jobs and other things like that. So as you get more intense, it doesn't necessarily translate to more traffic trips. So again, this would need to be cleaned up and a little bit more work done as you identify a preferred alternative and entertain developer offerings. But the good news is the traffic looks pretty good. All right. So I'm going to pass this on to Alex and I'm going to just switch spots here.
Very good. Hello again. So yeah, I'm going to walk through quickly some of our summary findings from our market analysis as well as our feasibility analysis, which will then inform... excuse me. Inform our work for the sort of combined final scenario that will take a little bit further. So in terms of the market, a couple things. I think the main takeaway we wanted to make is that in terms of downtown Mesa overall and also in terms of this site, certainly with regard to how we compared it to some of the other regional downtowns, if you look at the statistics, we do have less residential density and that has negative implications for all the businesses downtown. So one of the best things we can do is to add some more shoppers, add some more residents to really create some density, create some activity. And one of the best places to do that in downtown is this site. So we certainly believe that residential is certainly important in the near term and the success of residential in the near term will trigger the success of some of those other commercial uses that Don referenced in those later phases. At the same time, as I'm sure you're very well aware, there is a large pipeline of 900,000 units sort of in planning, under construction at the moment. So as we think about building out the near-term phases, we're going to need to think about how those particular uses are the same, overlap, or do not with what is in the pipeline and certainly try not to have a glut on the market, but you know, just think carefully about what's going on elsewhere, the success in the sort of Main Street corridor as well as this project. Also initially, there are certain typologies that pencil now that work already in the current market with simpler parking typologies, with less height, for example. You would probably want to start with those to avoid having to subsidize development, but as you prove the success of downtown and as we continue growing, you could imagine more ambitious typologies later on. In terms of the commercial uses, a retail office and hotel, I think we have some good news with regard to retail, which is that given the large pipeline, given the current residents and their spending capacity downtown and given the potential spending capacity from residents in this district, there will be the demand for a grocery store and maybe even more than one grocery store when everything is built out. So that's something I think that would really help downtown and also this project. In terms of restaurants and retail, we think that building the new districts may need to wait until the medium to later phases of the project, but you would still want to amenitize the first phases of development with retail and with shopping. You know, there could be food trucks in the beginning, there could be markets in the beginning, which will then, you know, bring attention to this district, bring people to the district and again pave the way for more commercial development in the medium to later phases of the project. In terms of office, there is pretty large office stock in downtown Mesa, but it is generally pretty old. There has not been a lot of construction in the last 20 years or so and as a result, rents are among the weakest of the downtowns in the region. But it's not all bad news. There is very low vacancy, which suggests that people want to be in downtown Mesa, they're just not paying very much to be so. There is also some good news in terms of innovation. We have two existing co-working facilities. Another one is looking for a location. ASU will sort of jumpstart that as well. So certainly looking forward to those medium to later phases, there could be an opportunity at some point for new construction that actually pencils without very much or any subsidy required. And then finally, for office, we again have a bit of a weaker market at present than some of the other downtowns, but a good vote of confidence is the fact that we do have one project in planning, the Foundry on Main Street. And should that project be realized and successful in the next few years, you could imagine how that could lead to some more projects. So with that...
Yeah, I think you meant hotel.
Hotel. Yes, hotel is what I meant.
Right. Excuse me, sir. I have a question for you.
Before you leave that slide, so on the multifamily side, you know, I've worked in the utility industry. I spent 17 years there and I know that retail and office typically follows rooftops. But when you look at surrounding communities, whether it's Queen Creek or Chandler or Gilbert or Scottsdale, they didn't... they don't necessarily have a multifamily component in their downtown, but rather they draw from around their downtown and from outside of downtown into their downtown. So how can we drive development and growth into our downtown without adding more multifamily, adding more rooftops? You know, because I mean, this site, the part that bothers me about this is that the site, you know, years ago was row houses and the majority of it probably needed to be razed. But then to turn around and put housing back on, something that was housing before, it doesn't make sense. And I think there's enough rooftops around our downtown and immediately adjacent to our downtown that would support development. So what is it that we could do as a council and as a community to really support our downtown to bring that diverse development in without adding more multifamily?
Couple thoughts. So we did some analysis on the retail front, for example, to understand, you know, within a reasonable driving distance, how much spending capacity there was and what that could mean in terms of supporting a grocery store, supporting more restaurants, for example. We already have a lot of retail on Main Street. A lot of it is not necessarily doing super well. It's struggling. It needs more customers. I would say, you know, obviously the best way to do this without needing to subsidize development directly because rents are lower is to bring in more immediately adjacent residents because again, if you look also at statistics in like the one or two square miles of downtown, whether it's single-family or multifamily, we just have fewer households than the other downtowns that in turn support those downtown businesses and make people want to work in those downtowns. So if we didn't want to have any multifamily, you would need a bunch of subsidy, I think, for some of these uses to make them work. And you would certainly have to have a destination that is less about a neighborhood and more about something people are driving into. I certainly think that the uses we're talking about will draw from a larger pool. There will be employment generated. They will attract customers who are driving in, who live in some of the single-family neighborhoods further out. But in terms of the feasibility, in terms of minimizing subsidy and making sure this pencils the most on its own, we certainly would recommend that there be a multifamily component. But certainly, to your point, the commercial components of the project should appeal not just to the immediate downtown residents, but to a much wider pool of Mesa residents. Okay. So that was our thoughts on market. I just have a couple more slides that are dealing with feasibility and this will play a little bit into the points I was just making. But if you crunch the numbers now, not based on necessarily average rents in downtown because again, we have older building stock that is pulling that down a little bit, but reasonable projections about what sorts of rents and what sorts of revenues you might get for new construction. In addition, layering on the assumption that all of these uses are covering the cost of structured parking, which is more expensive than service parking, obviously, for their own residents, for their own shoppers. You can see that with current rents, again, for new construction that we're anticipating, you actually don't quite pencil for the commercial uses yet. You do sort of do a little bit better than breaking even on the rental housing front. What I would say as a strong caveat for these figures is that this is based on the current market where there is some development, but it's mostly along Main Street, closer to Main Street. We do think that to the extent that this project is successful, the first phase plays out successfully and leads to a second phase, a third phase, a fourth phase, all of these numbers will look better. In addition, we're going to talk a little bit about a potential solution for district parking. If you take some of that parking cost out of these numbers, the numbers also do better in that case as well. If you just do the math and understand the different programs that we're talking about for the different districts, which are majority residential, depending on the exact breakout of residential and commercial, you're either in a slight surplus or at a slight deficit in terms of feasibility now, which again, you would expect would improve in future phases. And in addition, we're going to walk through some infrastructure costs. So this is new parks. You're going to see some new parks, utilities and road improvements. And those range, depending on the scenario, between about $14 million and about $30 million. And so the $5 million we just looked at for the medium scenario, for example, is revenue that we are projecting developers in today's market conditions should be willing to pay for land. And what we're suggesting is that those revenues, that $5 million, can actually be rededicated to cover a certain share of infrastructure. And as future phases go on and those revenues improve, there could be additional money to cover infrastructure directly from development. So number one, revenues from development is a source to pay for some of those costs. Number two, in terms of selecting a master developer particularly for the first phase, there certainly are various levers we have as a city in terms of what we're charging them, at least initially, for the site. And having a lower initial cost is another lever we have to make the project more feasible. And finally, number three, there may be certain projects, certain district parking, certain park projects that serve not just this project, but the wider downtown and city community that might need some public funding initially, which again, will lead to future phases that can cover on their own some of those infrastructure costs. So if you layer the numbers together, so from initial feasibility, projections for the development to the additional infrastructure costs, if you were to do this all tomorrow, you would need some subsidy. That's what the red numbers are suggesting. Again, this is over phases, so over time, this should do better. But if you were to do it all now, this is kind of what it would look like. And what we wanted to show you is that to the extent that funding is maybe not available to support the project, there's really not all that much of an increase in absolute terms in revenues that you would need to cover the infrastructure cost within the project. So number one, from the medium scenario, you'd only need about a 5% real increase in revenues above the rate of inflation to make the project approximately pencil to cover those infrastructure costs and also the structure parking. And then about 10% for the medium-high and about 20% for the high scenario. So nothing outrageous. This is something that will increasingly do well and increasingly support some of those commercial uses in the medium and longer-term phases, we believe. So just a couple of final thoughts before I turn it back to Don. Number one, the market is in flux. We cannot kind of take the average office rent and assume that that's the rent a new building would get. We haven't had a new building in a while. And so it's sort of an interesting position to try to do a market analysis of a market that's improving and changing so rapidly. But we definitely believe that things are moving in the right direction. And in the coming years, as downtown strengthens, as ASU comes in, there's a lot to look forward to in terms of success for this district and for the wider downtown. Number two, housing, as we are suggesting, is the most feasible use, but also having housing in this project will ensure the increasing feasibility of the commercial uses that we also want. So housing could be an anchor that can eventually get you some of those other uses that are going to be critical to having a mixed-use district. Number three, in the initial stages, even if you don't have a ton of new retail, there are things you can do to amenitize the district, to bring people there, to make it more comfortable for people to want to be in the district. And then finally, we're going to need a bit of outside funding, particularly in the first phase to kick this off, which certainly in terms of the tax revenues generated from the project could be repaid, you know, in not too many years. So with that, turn it back to Don. Thank you.
All right. So that tees out to what we're making a recommendation and we're calling it a hybrid concept. And so what we did is we went back to that community evaluation and looked at where the goods were. So we think it's the medium to medium-high and probably trending more towards the medium-high because I think when we look at the poor, most of those responses had to deal with intensity and height of buildings. And so that talked about maybe buildings up to 20 stories. And what we're suggesting is something more moderate in terms of eight stories rather than 20 stories. So with that, let me then show you what a land use hybrid might look like. So starting with the residential component of that, we would suggest that you would maintain the residential townhomes along Second Street. And so those could be a work-live situation, but those would be two to three stories. And I think we've heard from the Historic Preservation Board that they would prefer somewhere around 30 feet. I think that that's something close to what I think would be appropriate for that in terms of the number of floors. Three floors is 30 feet. And then what we'd like to see within the residential core is a combination of market acceptable buildings that you're seeing around the region, for example, the RAP projects. You see a lot of those in the Roosevelt District in Phoenix today. And then surface parking with tuck-under. And as you mature into a more viable district, you can then maybe get better rents and build podium projects, as you see around the square. So that's kind of the mix for that. In terms of the distribution of those uses, looking to have a core of 850 residential units in those three blocks and then the townhomes fronting the green space and then about 650 on the flex blocks. In terms of the potential for commercial and retail uses, you see the pink and red colors. So this includes a grocery store, 25,000 square feet, and then street-oriented uses fronting on Third and around the square. And also the possibility of also allowing more activity, ground floor activity on Hibbard as well, leading towards the neighborhood. So that's the core of that. That would give you over 100,000 square feet. So that's about the equivalent of a shopping center, for example, if you were to make a comparison of that. The other piece of this is really is trying to create an employment district. So what we've done is, if you remember, the High Option actually started entertaining redevelopment of the Delta Hotels parking lot. We've talked to them. They've given us the ability to look at that, to do it. They were okay with that. And then here is a series of office buildings from Hibbard all the way over to where you have a city-owned parking lot. And within that area, we're suggesting a municipal garage. And remember, this is our third phase. And so that is going to be a use that has multiple components to it that could serve the office during the day from eight to five. And then on evenings, it can serve the retail uses that we identified. And then it also has the ability to serve the Delta Hotel, the Mesa Amphitheater, and the Convention Center. So strategically located as a district facility, that you get multiple hours of use during the day. And that's on city-owned land today. So it's important to have that parking reserve because you're competing with suburban office development where they have surface lots. And that drives the cost down and it makes it more attractive. So within this district to compete with this, there might be a public investment in that that is essential so that you can get to the amount of office. So this fairly conservative amount of square footage that you see here, and as this matures, there may be an opportunity to even get more than this. But this is sort of a baseline number we think that is worth working for as a target. And finally, we'd like to reserve a corner area for another hotel and as maybe a last phase of this project. And that would be no more than 100 keys, like the Foundry Hotel that's being built in downtown. And so that would be a bookend to that one as well. So that's the final proposal with that. In terms of massing, again, this isn't a specific proposal, but we did this artist rendition to give you a sense of how we would anticipate transitions from the neighborhood with, you know, four and three and four and five-story buildings. And the biggest buildings would be around the Market Square. And you see that, the scale of that development. And this is looking from the south, looking at the transition and the scale. So the compatibility with the Wilbert neighborhood as well was something we looked at. So those are those two. In terms of sequencing, this is how we think this would lay out. So the idea is really is to break this up into chunks. So we're going to talk about a final number. So this would be, for example, a 20-year build-out. The initial sequence would be possibly in the first five years. And so the areas that you see in pink would require some public investment. And so those would include the shared mobility loop that we just talked to you about, Mayor, about the walking and biking connection. And we've run the numbers for this site itself. What this doesn't include is what that connection would be down to the light rail connection. So that we could do that as well and to give you a better sense of that because that's an important connection. Also, there's street improvements on Second and the park blocks and the inner mobility loop that provide that knitting component between the neighborhood and this development. There are some other roadway improvements and garden lanes and we suggest maybe those are something that should be built by the private sector. So those street improvements, sidewalks, any other utilities that are needed, lighting, landscaping, other things like that, would be about 5.2 million that you see there. For example, Third Place needs to connect all the way into Mesa as well. One of the other things that we've looked at here and haven't... let me just go back to the last slide, for example. I didn't mention this. There is... we're suggesting maybe there's an opportunity for a long-term acquisition of the Circle K and also the condominium project further to the south. Those aren't necessarily that you need to buy those now, but you may want to just get an agreement for first right of refusal of Circle K. Wanted to sell those at some point, that the city could acquire that. We're not suggesting that they got to leave today. They can stay and operate as long as they want, but I think that it's an important gateway parcel that maybe have a higher and better use than a Circle K in the long term. So skipping over the one I showed you. So what would that initial phase result in private development? So this would be about $60 million in terms of residential and a little bit of commercial retail uses on the ground floor along Third Place. So that's fairly substantial. So moving on to the second phase, what would the private, the public infrastructure costs be required to build this? So we're looking at the Market Square, which is really needs to be done right and it's a signature element. And within that, there is also a structure. So this is about 11.4 million for this. So it's a higher cost, but if you were to do this, our sense is that you can increase the land values of the adjacent parcels because we find when we look at these kind of projects, people will pay a premium to live next to it. And so that's an important... And so that's an important component of really creating an identity, not only for this district, but for the entire downtown, and also the connection on the Hibbert that ties and knits the neighborhoods, the Escobedo neighborhood to the Wilbur neighborhood as an amenity. Linking this all together is a key component as well. And also within that, we also talk about this micro-transit connection. So we want to be able to set that up so if we've got this little shuttle that's tying your Main Street to this district, that's also worked into this as well. So that's a little bit more than the initial phase in terms of the public investment. And from a private infrastructure costs, we think that the developer should finish up Third Place, Wilbur, the garden lanes as well. And so you see that cost there. So what does that yield in terms of estimated value? This would be about $128 million. So it's about double what you saw in the initial phase. So it's quite a bit more with that public investment that would be required. Then finally, moving on to the third phase, remember this is a 20-year piece, and these investments would occur over 20 years. So if you're talking about building a municipal garage, this number would not need to be done in the short term. So for example, if you have retail and you have open lots, you could park in those today or in the initial phases. But this municipal garage is that cost. We haven't worked the number for a centennial way because it's outside our study area, but we did run the number for the municipal garage, and that's about 18.6. And this parks your existing uses and then accounts for the surrounding office development that we've identified here. And we've also suggested maybe there's an acquisition of the small office building that's on University Drive. Again, maybe it's a first right of refusal, maybe get something a little bit more substantial at that location, as a key location. So that would then, it also includes some private costs for infrastructure, improving Pasadena and some garden lanes and finishing up Third Place as well. So that's about $50 million in private estimated value for those blocks, and that's the three phases. So if we look at this in summary, we see about $15 million, not including that parking structure that's outside of our study area. So if you included that, it's a little bit over 30. And then about $8.6 million for private infrastructure costs. And then the private development yield for the entire area that's outlined here is about $235 million. And so we talked about this with the Steering Committee yesterday. Kind of a rule of thumb that we have is if you can get about maybe $10 for every dollar of public investment, those typically make sense for these kind of projects. So if we're looking at $15 million and getting over $235 million over a 20-year period, that seems to make sense. So I think it's going to take a little bit of priming of the pot for the public to get this project going, change the investment environment, and really attract the kind of uses that we'd like to see long-term, so it's not simply just a series of apartment buildings. I think you're set up with this phasing, that sequencing scheme to get you there. So in summary, this is what the development would yield. 1,500 residential units, over 100,000 square feet of retail and dining, about 172,000 square feet of employment, and about 42,000 square feet of commercial. And then there are the amenities, parks, and a square as well that goes along with that, and 100-room, 100-key hotel. So that's the presentation, Jeff, and I'll hand it over to you at this point.
Mayor, Council. So Don and Alex have run through a lot of information in a short period of time, so we want to give you a chance to, for questions and discussion. Before we go into that, the one thing I'd like to, the caveat I'd like to add to this is that this is a conceptual master planning process. You know, we've shown some pictures and some images as to how this site could build out, but really what we are, what we're attempting to accomplish here are the, are the building blocks, the concepts behind the picture, and use that as our offering to go out into the development community and see if there is interest in developing the site. We aren't, we will use that as a guiding, a guidance document, but in the end, this requires partners that want to spend their money to develop the site as well, so they will have some input as to how they see the site building out. And we will work through those, those issues and those design questions as we, as we move forward with the project. But first, questions and...
Mayor, can I just add to that? I know that it's really easy to see these pictures and see these numbers, and they kind of come locked in. And, you know, I know a lot of people say, we'll react to this is going to be what the plan is, and it's not. It's conceptual. And I don't want anybody just to be afraid that if they don't like it, that they react to that. Or if they see something they really like, they don't say, "It's a city promise." We've heard that a lot, right? The city promised us to do this. City never, we don't, very rarely do we do promises like that. We can, and unfortunately, that's why I don't like showing images, because people don't forget those. And then they say that they create an obligation. This is an opportunity where we've had, and we really do appreciate the community's feedback, where we can go out to a developer now and a master developer and say, "Listen, we've done a lot of the legwork here and gotten feedback from the community. Here's what they like, here's what they don't like, and here's what we're trying to work with, these concepts." And then have them compete and come back to us with proposals. And then we can evaluate, which gets us closer to these concepts that have been raised. But my caution today is, it's good feedback, we need to get it, but until we have, as Jeff said, until we have the partner who's got the investors that are willing to put money into this, we're just really at the beginning phase of this discussion. And then this is a 20, 20-plus-year build-out. So for most of us, we're probably only going to see the first couple of phases because this is a generational build-out over a long period of time. Thank you.
If I could just add one thing to that. He's right about that. But I think the, what we find with the development communities, they're looking for certainty and predictability. So the couple of things they look for is the public has reviewed it, and I think we've got some good input on it. And then they're looking for some, some degree of agreement from your council and elected officials, that they support the concept because a good plan has flexibility, and this is just a framework. And so nothing has been decided. That's all. That's the only other comment.
Great. I agree. Thank you. And I think there's a lot of material that's been presented right now. I mean, we could talk for hours about what has just been presented, and we have talked for hours about what's been represented. I think we started down this process a couple of years ago, and we decided, well, we're going to do this in a very thoughtful, deliberate way. We're going to engage the community. We're going to, this is an important part of our town. We're not going to rush into anything. If we just wanted this to be developed, we could have sold this property and made a nice, nice chunk of change a couple of years ago and just seen what the market presented. But we decided to not go that route. We decided to go this very deliberate, studied route, and I'm glad we did, although it has taken a lot of time. That's been a good thing. There's been, as you indicated earlier, hundreds of people have stepped up and expressed their, their thoughts on this. This is an important part of our community, and a lot of people are really committed to, to being done correctly. So not surprisingly, we have folks that want to, that are here this morning that want to talk about this. So I'm committed to hearing from them. So, Council, if it's all right with you, why don't we go ahead and allocate three minutes for our public to come up each to speak? And then, like I say, I know we could literally spend hours going through the details of what's been presented, but, and I'm not going to short, short shift any council member from having their say this morning, but maybe just to get things through, let's, let's hear from the public as well. Thank you. Please don't go too far away. I'm sure we'll have some questions for you very quickly. First, we'll hear from Misty Mills. And again, here's the drill this morning. We're going to do this three minutes apiece. Thank you very much. I think right now we've got six cards. Misty, are you here? Misty, please step up. You're first.
May I please speak after Janice?
Okay, Janice, come on up. Janice Genovia. Janice, I know you've got a dog in this fight. Thank you for all the work you've done in the Wilbur district.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. And we do appreciate all the public input, and we clearly understand this is a conceptual, long-term process, but we certainly want to make sure that our voice is heard regarding density and regarding the impact to our neighborhood. So today, I'm presenting on behalf of 12 of my neighbors. I listed them on my blue card. I can say all their names, but I'd rather not. And they were unable to make it today. So we have this first page. I, I don't know why I wasn't able to put my slideshow up, so I'll do it this way. But our neighborhood had a wonderful experience when they developed the fire station. And as you can see, it was done in scope, scale, and style of our district. And from that, we even, they financed for us the historic street signs out of that, and they gave us historic lighting. And we were really impressed with having a plan that looks like our neighborhood. And we even got the historic bell. So we're looking forward to working with you, and we're sure that we can find the same compromises as we move along. But the main idea for today is what develops along the north side of Second Street is crucial to ensure a seamless transition and compatibility of the homes built in the Wilbur district between the 1890s and the 1930s. We believe that no more than two stories, not to exceed 30 feet in height. And we are not happy with condos, townhouses. We are, Don had mentioned at some point, two-story bungalow-style homes. That would be, we feel, in line with a seamless transition to our, to our neighborhood. So we're hoping to see some porches and posts and some stylistic changes that match our community. On Slide four, we agree. The neighborhood is very much in agreement with the medium-high-density concept, but the high-density concept is definitely not compatible with our district or our area. So, and we are hoping that the high-rises are located as close to the large streets, Mesa Drive and University. And we're all about the, using trees and that, that, that are in the other historic districts, but also we feel that if the city of Mesa is watering and caring for trees, we would hope that they would be edible trees. Why not have healthy fruit available to the elderly, the children, and the homeless that are going to walk along and play in these parks? So we want a sustainable concept. And we're very excited about the buffers and the, the beautifying of the green belts there and the, the street calming along Second Street and that 90-foot buffer. We are very much in favor of the grocery store, but we do want a smaller-scale grocery store. We're hoping for like a Sprouts or a Trader Joe's, but we would not want a Walmart. One of the things that we are hoping could occur during the redevelopment of Site 17 is that the developers would consider burying the wires. You might have noticed in these pictures that we have these over 100-year-old wires, and every storm that comes, we get hot wires laying on our sidewalks. We have elderly, children, and animals, and there are about 15 little tags on the phone poles, centrally, "City of Mesa," clocks. I can go on and on, but when the wires come down and hit our sidewalks, everybody uses these phone poles, but nobody will take responsibility for it. Our neighbor's backyard actually caught on fire with one of these wires. And every time, the last time the wire was down below my head, it took three months to get somebody to respond to that. So we think it would really beautify the streets in Wilbur, but it would also be a safety feature. And on item number eight, I'd like to clue into this little section here on the right. You see all the residential in its, is in orange, and our district would like to ask that the park space up here be moved south, closer to the district, because we feel that a walking park is very much in line with the character of a historic district. You know, people in the 1890s would like to take a stroll, so we would like to have the park closer to us instead of in the middle of the project. And the 90-foot, now we come up to this image here. This 90-foot landscape park block along the north side of Second Street is absolutely crucial buffer to the historic district. In this park block, thoughtful landscaping should be used that includes shade and fruit trees that are already in Mesa historic districts. This will help to mitigate concerns about the transition between the district and the new development. And lastly, we're getting there. The street lamps, if you'll look at the indicators here, you can see that there's a little seven-foot walking path lamp, and then there's these big, tall, I don't even know how high they are. Well, when we ordered the lamps in our district, we actually ordered the walking path lamps that are the right lamps for residential, and the city bought them, but they moved them down on Main Street, and they put these big thoroughfare lights in our district, and they're incompatible. So during this digging up and tearing out and rebuilding, we would hope that you would consider taking those big density lights and putting them in your new development or along Main Street and bringing in the correct pathlights that truly belong in a residential district. That should have been done a long time ago. And then the very last thing is that our district really does want a vibrant downtown. This is a picture of San Diego's gas lamp quarter, and we do want very much to move forward. We just want to do it in a way that's respectful and compatible and without in any way compromising business on Main Street. We do not want to compete with Main Street. And lastly, I just want to thank you so much for your time, and we are a bit concerned about a hotel being built when our current hotel is struggling so badly. And we also ponder quite a bit about more office space when we have 25 empty office spaces currently located on Pasadena. So thank you so much for your time and attention. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Janice.
You're welcome.
Obviously, we gave Janice more than three minutes. That's because Janice represents the historic Wilbur district. Many individuals I know were involved in...
Yeah, he's had to work.
In the presentation, so thank you.
You're welcome.
And we appreciate the, we've talked about, about and with the Wilbur district quite a bit, and we keep promising you to stick around because good things are on our, on their way. So I hope you get that feeling. Misty Mills. And going forward, I am going to be rather strict in enforcing the three-minute timeline. Yes, please.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, neighbors. My name's Misty Mills, and I live at 137 North Wilbur Street. So of course, this is of major concern of me as a house owner and in developing incorporation to the properties that we are now discussing. It has been addressed already that safety is probably one of our most, most concerns. The wires definitely are a safety hazard, and I hope that that would be sincerely heard and dealt with. Also, our streets, we want to make sure that our children and elderly are safe when crossing. Also, our streets, we want to make sure that our children and elderly are safe when crossing. So adequate lighting should be necessary without those horrible 30, 50-feet lights that loom over our streets, which really don't do any much better than having street lighting that you can actually see your sidewalk more clearly. I'm all for beauty. Yes, get some trees, lots of pretty trees, edible trees, why not? You know, make it fun for our neighborhood. Beauty is important. We want to enhance the area so it is, you know, someplace that people want to live and work and shop. The park's a great idea. Make it beautiful. The gas lamps, wonderful idea. That adds such a flair to this neighborhood. I'm all for that. And a small grocery store, we don't need a Walmart. We don't need all that extra traffic here. But, you know, a little, like Jan said, a little Sprouts or a Trader Joe's, that will give the community somewhere to go without having to drive to Riverview or wherever else you want to shop. It'll be right in the community, yet not looming over to bring more traffic, you know, that we really don't want. Keeping most of that commerce and things towards the university, towards Mesa Drive, you know, and keeping our little inside residential neighborhood, you know, what it is today, residential. So as we look at these things, I just think it's a great idea for going ahead with this medium-high area. And I see no reason for a hotel, like Jan said. That hotel that we have presently is just so struggling. Why would we want to even take any kind of business away from somebody that's already struggling? So I think that's about all I have to say today, Council, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Misty. Next is Tim Boyle.
A question for staff, if you don't mind.
Oh, sure. Tim, before you get started, go ahead.
Just a quick question. The firm, the hotel that they're referencing, that's like the third phase. We're talking 20 or 30 years away, right?
Yeah.
And it can be changed.
And when the market bears it. Again, none of this happens if a private developer investor doesn't deem it going to make money.
Sure.
So it's just a concept. But yeah, it's, like you said, it's the very, very last phase.
I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Tim?
I brought a shadow with me.
Wow. I heard a question. I thought I heard a question. I saw it was jumping up quick.
You did, yeah.
Excuse me, everywhere I go. Ladies and gentlemen, Mesa is bigger than Miami. We just don't act like it. I appreciate the work that Crandall Lemble has done, a very talented team of designers. I'm still concerned that the scope and direction that they were given is just too small. You maybe remember back in the day, Apple was building computers, and they were floundering. And then Steve Jobs came back and said, "Build me flowers. I don't want computers, I want flowers." And then Apple developed the iMac and iPhone and became the biggest, richest company in the world. I'm worried about the scope a little bit. The 20-year buildup, for example, in 20 years, my kids will have all moved to Gilbert, and I want them to stay here in Mesa. At the planning and zoning meeting last night, we approved a very Miami-like gallery park project. You've probably seen bits of it. It's over by the Capeport Airport. That's thinking about tomorrow. That's thinking about the future. That's the direction that we need to move. Look at what Riverview Park is doing. That's bigger-than-Miami thinking. Look at what Tempe Town Lake did for Tempe. That's bigger-than-Miami thinking. This project is in an opportunity zone. There are lots of investors that are still figuring out what the opportunity zones are. It was this idea developed by the same guy who created Napster to have large amounts of money put into downturned areas and turn them around. I had a friend just the other day, I'm doing a house forum, he said, "Hey, I have $6 million. I need an opportunity zone. Tell me where to put it." People have this money, they don't know where to put it, and this area is right in one of our opportunity zones. I know that hundreds have come to the meeting, hundreds have discussed this and talked about that, but I'll remind you that 362 residents wanted a beach when we did the Imagine Mesa campaign in this area. They loved that idea. It was laughed at. I'm sure people's eyes are rolling right now as I bring it up again. But then again, Gilbert just announced that they're building a beach. So they stole our idea, and they're doing this. We need to build a regional draw. We need to ask ourselves a different question. What will actually bring ASU students, actually bring Scottsdale shoppers, actually bring Gilbert families to Mesa? I think we're thinking too small. At a recent meeting where the P&amp;Z met the, met with other people, we, someone said, "Hey, we should have our next meeting in Hawaii, as long as we're having these meetings together." And my response was, "We should make Mesa so that people say, 'Let's have our next meeting in Mesa.'" Why not make Mesa so good that people want to resort and meet here? So I say again, Mesa is bigger-than-Miami, and let's act like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you for your service on planning and zoning. Appreciate it. Ryan Smith.
My name is Ryan Smith. I live at 3105 East Huber, lifelong resident of Mesa. My concern about this is if it's built out as-is, that the traffic and the parking is much more of an impact than what it seemed to point out. For example, University already usually backs up to almost Hibbert sometimes on the eastbound route in the afternoons. If you're adding another, potentially upwards of 1,500 units, you're talking another 2,000-plus cars at a minimum, because every unit has at least one car, and anything less than. Everybody around here drives cars. And so like having your Pomeroy, if it comes out eastbound onto University, that's going to be an impact right there. If you're going to have that, it needs to be southbound on Pomeroy only. Same thing issue with Third Place connecting all the way up to Mesa Drive. You can't let people come out on Third Place and turn north onto Mesa Drive. That's just going to be too much of an impact because you already have quite a bit of traffic northbound Mesa Drive. If they do that, probably need to look at going southbound. If, you're going to have to put in lights. Most likely at Hibbert to put traffic to go westbound anywhere out of that complex of people, because you've got too many people, there's no light to go westbound out of. And the same thing with going northbound on Mesa Drive as well. You're probably going to have to put another light in at Second Street, because First Street is just too far south. So they're probably going to have to put an additional one to get traffic out of there to manage traffic in and out of Mesa Drive. As far as like, you know, the microtransit and, you know, who's paying for that? Seems like it's just serving a small group of residents, but the rest of the city is going to have to subsidize that. And the other question I had too with the other concern was the, this transit corridor going down Mesa Drive. Mesa Drive is already pretty tight. I don't think there's a lot of extra space to have just walking and bikes more than what there is without taking up another lane. And Mesa Drive is, already has fairly amount of traffic as-is. And then as far as wanting to, on the city property, wanting to put in a lot of trees and stuff like that, that's a great idea. It's a great concept, but at a time when water issues are rising all throughout the entire state, not just theirs, Mesa. Who's paying for these trees? Who's watering the trees? We have other developments where we have to do nothing but desert development. You know, why, why do we, why do we get to be able to put in trees here when nobody else gets to put in trees that use up high-water usage? And, you know, if we're going to sell the land here, probably the land should probably be sold in chunks and prove that it can be developed before the next chunk of land is sold and decided what to do with that. Don't just sell it all in one phase and hope it gets built out over the next two years, 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Oscar Mancenas.
Morning, Mayor, Council, Buenos dias. I come here speaking on behalf, first off, I'm Oscar Mancenas. I live at 542 North Lewis in the Washington Escobedo District. I come here speaking on behalf of my neighborhood and by the looks of it, on behalf of my generation I wanted to, I wanted specifically to cite that because, and I know we're still speaking conceptually about this, but I wanted to remind everyone here and anyone who's listening that the timescale we're talking about, as far as when this would be completed, when this would be enacted, I myself would be in my 40s. I know hard to believe, but I envision these kinds of projects, and I envision the children that currently run around my neighborhood. I envision the kids I see in Mesa, and I think about what is ultimately going to be most sustainable for them? What is going to help forge and activate a sort of sense of civic pride, a sense of identity? I want to address other comments people have made in terms of, you know, who is going, by this time, will young people have already fled to Gilbert? I say this as someone who once left Mesa to get an education and have since returned and don't plan on leaving again. What kept me coming back was not that, oh, hey, there's shopping malls here, or there's opportunity to do this or that. I say this also as a member of a generation who is, by all accounts, slated to make less than the prior generation and the way things are trending economically. I mean, you can look at studies done over and over again, the way retail is going, the way online business is sort of taking over things. What is going to be ultimately more, most sustainable and help forge these other sort of intangible senses of civic pride and not simply what seems to be these sort of superficial draws for people who come from outside? Obviously, we cater a lot to tourists, and I think that's great. I love that people come here. I love that people think of Mesa. But towards, regards to the gentleman who references Miami, have you ever driven in Miami? Have you ever seen the way people sort of use that city as though it is disposable? It's the difference between owning your car and renting a car, right? Who's going to take more care of it? Who's going to care for it longer? I would also think just sustainably, you're talking about a city that in 40 years is slated to be underwater, so there's also that element. So ultimately, I guess what I want to get across here is, thinking about this 5, 10, 15-years timescale, what is ultimately going to be best for people who are very young now, who are going to make use of these public spaces, who are going to partake in things like youth rec leagues, right? Who are going to say, "I grew up in this neighborhood, and like my friends grew up in this neighborhood, and we grew up playing games, we grew up hanging out on weekends, we grew up doing this or that." I personally don't have any children, but again, I think of my nephews, my niece, I think of the small children in my neighborhood, I think of the small children in the Wilbur, and how this will ultimately benefit them. Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar. Welcome back home. We have one more card from Maria Mancenas, who I assume is your proud mother. She indicates she does not wish to speak. Is that correct? Of course, please, yes.
My name is Maria Mancenas, and I reside at 542 North Lewis in Mesa for the past 33 years. So I'm here on behalf of my neighborhood, which I represent, and I'm excited about this, this development coming to Mesa. And I would like to emphasize that some of the elements included on this project align with the quality of life plan, namely, new housing, retail, grocery, grocery store, jobs. I'm concerned, again, about traffic and parking spaces. I expressed that concern last night during the presentation, and so hopefully, we can, you know, be able to develop something. I know this is, if it gets approved and recommended, there's a lot of work that still needs to be done, but I'm excited about all the improvements along Mesa Drive, north of Mesa Drive. But I think that we need to do a little bit of more work on parking and spaces, and I'm also excited about the new hotel coming up to downtown. We need those jobs. We need more competition. Maybe that will bring more customers to the hotels here in downtown Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Any more blue cards? Okay. Thank you. Council, now's a good time to discuss. Mr. Luna.
So, Mr. Brady, this is just a framework that we're going to be working with, which it's not a definite plan. And it's going to take a public process. So we're just, this is an idea. We're coming up with an idea. This is a possible framework. And then, once we get a developer come in that's interested in developing a property, then there'll be a public process for that--
Sure.
--in terms of what's going to actually be developed. And it's going to take a series of years.
Correct. And Mayor, Council, thank you, Councilor Luna. And I think it was mentioned earlier, and I think this is very true, we have been trying to develop the site for a long time. It's not just been a couple of years. It's been going on since I've been here. But I think this is where we've progressed in this effort, is that we've been able to define a vision or a concept that the community's had significant involvement in, the council's been briefed on. So now when we go to the development community, it's not kind of this uncertainty and unknown. We can say, "This is what the concept looks like." And what we would prefer is to get a master developer who's going to be there for the long term, who can help us phase this through and work through this. And it's going to take a lot, a lot of work on their part and the city's part. But the idea is that at least the right kind, the developers who are, who are familiar with these types of products and these kinds of mix of uses will be the ones that come to the table. It won't be a developer who only just does office or a suburban developer who does a strip center. It'll be someone that obviously has more experience in this area. But now they have an idea of what we're looking for, and I think that will help us tremendously as we go out and do an RFP. And I want to make one more comment, and it was brought up, and I think it was a very good comment. We need to get to the market quickly because, and I think the opportunity zones is an opportunity to be able to hopefully take advantage of that, because there is funds sitting out there, and it's, and maybe this is the opportunity to get this out on the market quickly so we can attract those kind of developers also. Thank you. Frankie.
Yeah, Jeff, did we, did you all look at the economic activity that a plan like this would generate here in downtown, maybe, or what's the, did you look at that information?
Mayor, Councilmember, ready? With Council's direction, if we move forward with the, with the recommended hybrid concept, we will actually, that'll be amongst our next steps. We'll go and we'll continue to refine the market and feasibility analysis, and we'll start to look at those, those numbers and what kind of economic activity we could, we could reasonably project coming out of this development from, from a sales tax perspective, from a retail sales perspective, but also from utility rates, things, revenues to the city as well as those, direct revenues to the city, but as well as those indirect revenues through sales tax and just the increased population activity.
And another comment, is there, is there a thought, maybe the first two phases to build out, that much quicker? You know, just looking at Roosevelt and down, and Phoenix, you know, that, that, those developments happened in the last eight years, 10 years? So I'm sure they had a larger time span, but they just popped up tremendously very quickly. So is there any, any thought that, especially Phase 1 and 2, which I think go really nicely with not only residential, but you build out some office, the park, and those kinds of things that will bring more individuals in? Is there a thought that it could happen much sooner? I just--
I will, I will let Don weigh in on this, but I will, I'll start by saying that there's a real, real thoughtfulness in the reason behind having phasing. Now, the phasing could, very likely, this could be a success, and it could advance the later phases much quicker, but there is some real reasons behind doing a phasing. And I'll let--
I think you could get it, but that's a lot of units to absorb, even if you did it very quickly. And, and part of the phasing that we're looking at is, again, is to try to increase the value of the land. One of the, kind of the tenants, when you start looking at a site like this, you don't want to build on your first phases immediately, because you may not get the highest value for that or the kind of units you want. So I think you've, you've got the ability to move forward with a, really a five-year plan. And I suggest that you really start identifying some key dates that you meet, like what do you want to do in the next 90 days? What do you want to do in six months? What do you want to achieve in one year? And as you go through over the six, those timelines, you need to make sure that you're meeting those, because my fear is not so much that you're not moving forward quick enough, but you're moving too slowly. And I think that's probably a more concern at this point. Anything, Alex, you want to add on that?
I would just say, you know, the, the plan may say, you know, we may say 20 years now. We're not saying to developers, "You can't do this in under 20 years. You must wait X or Y years." I think the idea is that we're coming up with, you know, based on trends here and in other downtowns, what is a reasonable expectation? And then should the market be stronger? Of course, let's move more quickly. Let's have it be 10 years. Let's, you know, but, but it's an estimate, and the market will tell us how long it actually takes.
And Mayor and Council, I think another important thing to add to that is that as we increase the value of the property, additional sites become, there's more opportunity for some of these sites to actually go to a higher-order use. Instead of market-rate apartments, we could be talking about for-sale condominium units versus, so the greater we increase the property value, the more likely it is that we'll get some of those uses that we really want to see in downtown as well as the, not just straight apartment uses.
Yeah, and that increases spending power and lots of other things, and people with jobs want to be closer to working, so that activates the ability to get office. So there's a lot of really value in getting more, higher, better units in this project. So there's a lot of really value in getting more, higher, better units in this project. I think the other thing that we haven't really talked about is what this means for your greater downtown. And I think this further analysis is really important because I think what you're going to find is, it's going to raise, you know, the rising tide is going to raise all ships. So I think you're going to see neighborhood improvements and around the surrounding area as well. So it's a key component of getting the downtown going here. I mean, I think Main Street needs this project.
Thank you. Jen, and then Jeremy.
Thank you. Just to back up on the RFP process, are we putting the entire project, all the land, to a developer at once? Are we going to sell it off in phases? Or how is that overall going to be handled with the...
So, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, we would, we're going to come back with some different proposals. I think at some point, you do want to have a master developer who kind of has responsibility for this entire development, has the vision, consistency, the guideline, the design guidelines and buying into the infrastructure because there are going to be some investments, they're going to benefit different phases of development over time. But would we sell the property off at once? No. We would work on some kind of a takedown process over a period of time, but we can, we would work through all those details when we start putting the RFP out.
I'd like to see a little bit that we retain control over the property, maybe that is the intent. I'm trying to really kind of absorb the direction, maybe we're shaping that right now, that we have, if we adopt a kind of a master plan, conceptual plan, that we stay in a position of control, of incremental development, that's quality, sustainable, reflecting the needs of the, our downtown. I worry sometimes if we leave it in the controls of a developer with even best intents, it's still 20 years, which is usually phased over different controls of, as it will be, in the city and management stuff, that we retain the control as a city and our residents and what that looks like and how it responds to how our city downtown is developing and what the priorities are, so that we make sure it's a quality development that serves us and to our values.
Thank you. Jeremy.
My question was in regards to Jeff's comment. And when you talk about ownership versus apartments, I think one of the things that concerns me is just this turning into like a very dense apartment complex that inevitably, you know, becomes lower cost apartments. So can you speak in regards to how we can ensure that this becomes ownership rather than just a simple renting model?
Sure. First, I'll actually, maybe I'll address the renting side of it. One thing that I'd like to, I guess, say, and from my opinion, is that when we do have more, we're going to have more apartments in downtown. That's a lot of the projects that are working, that are coming through this process right now for Main Street. It is, maintaining the quality of those apartments, making sure that the rents stay high so that we're continuing to have quality rental projects. It's about the community that they're in. It's about the neighborhood that they're in and making sure that we still have a strong neighborhood so that the development is contributing to something larger. Where we see disinvestment in market and multifamily and where you see rents going down is generally in those areas where it's a suburban garden apartment, where there isn't that necessarily, that sense of community, where somebody's bought in, whether they're renters or whether they're owners, they bought into a community. And that's what our downtown is intended to be. So to that, to that extent, I, my personal opinion and my professional opinion is that apartments in downtown are going to maintain their value, are going to maintain higher rents than you would see generally outside in suburban areas. Now, having said that, we do all also want to see ownership. That is an important component. We want to have that variety of options of residential in downtown so that somebody could have their entire adult life, or actually their entire life could be spent in downtown, just going through the different residential options that are available. How we can ensure that it is going to be ownership is, to some degree, the fact that we can increase value of the land over time, that will just help us make the value proposition to developers that an ownership model is possible. I guess some of it is also in our control of the land and how we present to the developers what opportunities are out there and what our desires and our vision is for the site.
Yeah. So here's the thing that's going to create ownership, is doing your public spaces right. So if you do the square, the park blocks, you do the garden lanes and you design your streets, you become a premium location where people want to live. And so that will increase the likelihood that the unit prices can go higher. So just anecdotally, I think I maybe touched on this a little bit in our steering committee meeting, we find about 20% increase in property values next to quality public spaces in urban environments. So that translates to ownership condominiums potential or higher rent apartments. So do these right. You need to spend that public money or get a partnership with the developer to make sure that you're not just doing a lowest cost square or public green spaces, but they're part and parcel in increasing the ability to get affordable versus ownership housing, getting more ownership.
Sure. So on that note, I guess one of the things that concerns me is, you know, what entitles, and this is more staff-oriented question, like what entitles a specific neighborhood to get higher end city services, whether, let's go to the far extreme, like something like cobblestone streets, right? Or some of these fancy light posts? And I guess the question becomes one of fairness, right? Like, is it fair to subsidize one neighborhood to the extreme while the rest of the city gets left with just simply asphalt streets? And my question is leading to, can we do more of an Eastmark type of model where like Eastmark wants higher end things, and that's fine? But can we sort of push that into a special taxing district so that if we are subsidizing a high-end block, that the taxes are paid by those individuals who are actually enjoying all of those amenities?
So Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, I think that's an interesting concept because I do think that you bring up a really good point about scale of this area and the public investment into this much acres versus consistency of, you know, across the whole city. And so I think that's something I have to be sensitive with. I think part of the idea is if we can get a developer seeing that this is a great opportunity for investment, the more we can have the developer take on those costs. And then they have the opportunity either through, as DMV has chosen to do, to do it through a taxing district, to reimburse themselves for those improvements, or as most other developers would do it, they include that in the cost when they sell the property or it's in the, or it's in the rents, right? So there's just, you're either paying it through a tax or you're going to pay it through rents or through your mortgage. And that's how the developer then offloads those costs or gets reimbursed for those costs. So we'll just have to work with a developer on what that mix and what that approach is. This is a unique property because it's not only in the city of Mesa, it's close to downtown, it's in a redevelopment area, but we own the land. So I think we have a lot of opportunities to work with the developer to try to keep the specific expense obligations from the city, trying to keep those at a minimum, recognizing we'll probably have a role in this because if we invest in the property, maybe we get a higher return and we can sell it to the developer. So we still, those are the concepts we still have to work on, but those are just some thoughts sitting here today, how we would work on that.
Sure. And I appreciate that, Chris. I, like I said, I guess my only concern is like, as we move forward, if we can just focus on, if we are going to spend a significant amount of money subsidizing this block, I think it would be a fair taxing model to make sure that those, that that responsibly falls onto those residents.
Other comments? Mr. Thompson.
I like the fact that the citizens and the residents in the area actually had a lot of input on this. I think that was important. I think that was somewhat missing the last time we did this years ago. So I'm glad that that's taken place. I still want the wow factor. I'm looking for the wow factor. You know, I, when I look at the multifamily piece that's on there, and on your chart, you didn't have it on there, but, you know, 1,500 units. And if you're looking at an average apartment of 900 square feet, or whether you're looking at a 1,200 square foot condo, that's anywhere from 1.3 to 1.8 million square feet of residential. And you've only got 100,000 square feet of retail and another 100,000 square feet of office. And so the, you know, I know that there's the, there's that perfect blend somewhere between residential and retail that makes a neighborhood sustainable. I don't know what, I can't remember what that is. I don't know what that, what that ratio is, but it just seems awfully high to have that much high density, medium density packed into, into one area and not have the support around it that would be proper to make it sustainable in the future. But overall, I mean, I like the product, I like the project, you know, and over the next 20 years, it'll be interesting to see how it develops and how it moves forward. One thing, I'm hopeful that, that we can apply form-based code to this site as well because I think it'd be, it'd be interesting to see how the developers can maneuver through that. And maybe they end up giving us the wow factor because of the form-based code. What I don't want to do really is kind of RFP this thing to death. You know, we have a tendency to do that. We'll put out an RFP and we try to dictate exactly what and how it's going to be built and what it's going to be and so forth. And I think we can do a lot more through either form-based coding or through zoning or through development agreements to get what the residents want and make it a win-win for everybody, so.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Jeff and Don, for your comments and presentation and especially laying out how you're going to blend everything together with the historic district, Wilbur, and the condos across the street. Some of the things I've been following the Roosevelt build-out is, you know, they just celebrated Block 29. They had a big celebration of the build-out. And they took a whole city block and developed that into whatever 20-story and apartments and condos and the build-out is there. We'll never be like our big brother, Phoenix. However, we can make a difference in this area. We need to move forward. The, the infrastructure build-out and some of the things that the citizens addressed in today, they concern me. However, I know that they can be worked out, the streets, the traffic, the lighting, the, again, the trees, the irrigation, things like that. But there's a lot to absorb here to make this fundamentally appeasing to everyone. And I think you've done a good job in doing that, in meeting with a lot of the stakeholders. And I look forward to working through the whole process and hopefully I'm alive long enough to see it completed. So thank you.
Yeah, amen to that.
I don't know about that.
Right. Never know.
Well, like I said, we could, I wish we had hours and hours to talk about this. I would really enjoy getting into the details of the presentation that you made. But this is agendized to provide direction. And to Mr. Brady's point, my only regret that we went through this process is that we've spent a few years in a really up economic trend studying it rather than putting cranes in the air. So I am anxious to see us move forward and to get as much as we can done while the sun is shining economically. So you mentioned that, and again, this is a 20-year plan, but we need, this group needs a four or five-year plan. And so I would like us to move forward and follow the staff's suggestions. And I think the only thing I know for sure is that five or 10 or 20 years from now, this is not going to look like the pictures that you've made. I think we all understand that. But it is a great, it is great to have a plan. And then we'll see how the market and how very creative people that are going to be attracted to this project, what they add. And this council, hopefully, and future councils, will be making a lot of really good decisions, I think, over the next few years. So Jeff, can you give us another summary? What is it that you would recommend that we do at this point?
Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor, if you and council support the hybrid concept and would like us to move forward, our next steps would be to take that and continue to refine and do our market and feasibility analysis, start to put together some stronger numbers to make the business case to you as well as do some more estimates, more detailed estimates on public infrastructure costs, potential public infrastructure costs that we could then be talking about for future CIP. In addition to that, we would then also be preparing and drafting our first developer offerings and be able to go out and test the market and see whether there are partners that want to move forward with us.
Okay. Mr. Freeman asked what timeline. So are you going to come back, Mr. Brady, in a couple of months and say we're ready to issue an RFP or...
Yeah, I, you know, in my mind, if I could, I'd put out an RFP over the weekend, right? Because I think that's that urgent. And we need, and I think Councilman Thompson's right, we need to be not too prescriptive. We just need to find someone who can demonstrate they have the experience and they've done something like this before. Get them in the room and then select them and then start having these discussions. The issues about the public improvements and stuff is, those are all going to be, those are all on the table to be negotiated. And my goal is not to pay for a penny. I know that's not what's going to happen, but the developer is going to try to do everything they can to have us pay for everything. And so we'll be having that discussion. So we'll figure out those costs and those amenities and the developer have another idea. But my hope would be, if council would be comfortable allowing us the direction, while we, in some of these studies we still need to do, but allow us to go ahead right now and begin developing the RFP. And we'll keep you up to date and then try to get that out on the streets sooner than later, using this as the concept. The developer is going to know, "What are you looking for?" And this is what we'll be laying out for them to start with. And that's where we want to begin the discussion.
Yes, Jeremy.
Just to have one last comment before we move forward, I just want to say, one other thing that I forgot to mention is on, when we talk about how we want Sprouts or Trader Joe's in our neighborhoods versus Walmarts, I think it's important to remember that those companies analyze the median income in the neighborhood before they move into the neighborhoods. It's not as if we can just go to Sprouts or Trader Joe's and say, "Hey, come to our neighborhood because we want you here." That's not how the process works. It has to support their business. So I think in that, we need to shift our focus to say, "What is it that we're doing to boost the median income in the neighborhood?" And I believe what you have done here is that. So I have people that have been heavily involved in the process who said, "You guys have done an excellent job." So I want to first take the time to thank you, Jeff, Don and Alex, for the work that you guys have done. And I'm fully in support of moving forward with an RFP over the weekend.
And Mayor, Council, if I may add to that, Councilmember Whitaker, I think a large thank you needs to be given to Lindsay Belinky as well. We would not be here in this timeline if it was without her efforts. A lot of the outreach, a lot of the great outreach, it's all been Lindsay that's really put that together. So it's been a great help to have her with us.
Great.
And while we're doing a few thank yous, I want to do a shout out to the public who has shown up at all these meetings. We've had tremendous turnout. They've been engaged through the entire process and that's what it's all about. So I want to say thank you for everybody who's shown an interest, taken your time and energy to have that process. And let's continue on that dialogue as we move forward. Thank you.
So Mr. Whitaker has made a motion that we lock Jeff in his office this weekend and issue this RFP ASAP.
I had one of those weekends a few years back, Mayor.
Okay. So I think that's, I'm feeling that that's the consensus. Do we need to make a motion to that effect or do you get it?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And thanks to our consultants. They've done a really nice job. Appreciate it.
Thank you, too. It's a wonderful community. And I'd like to thank Janice and all the people who heartfelt have really contributed positively, come with a, without any preconceptions and been actively involved in this. And I think I'd take all their considerations to heart because they've helped this process. Thank you.
Thank you. That means a lot because I know you really have embedded yourself in the community and worked hard at this, so we appreciate what you've done.
Sure.
We do have a very substantive presentation next on our agenda, so I'm going to suggest that we take a five-minute recess and we'll be back to hear Item 1B in five minutes. Thank you. We'd like to welcome everybody back. Again, we've got another important item, our city's financial future is the next agenda item. So that's, okay. Forecast is another way of saying it's a good guess, right? Well, thank you. Welcome. Please proceed.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. This morning, we wanted to talk to you about our financial forecast. As you know, this is what we kind of kick off in prelude to the budget cycle, which will actually start our budget process, which will start on April 1st. And so this morning with me, I have Brian Richel, who's one of our deputy budget directors, and he's going to review the forecast with you both for our general governmental fund and also our enterprise fund.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. So with the general governmental funds, I'll start off with the general governmental fund and then go into the enterprise fund. So starting off with the general governmental funds, we start in basically early fall, summertime with the actual financial... with the actual financial forecasting with revenues. And with the revenues, what we do is we'll forecast the current expenses and revenues, along with looking at historical trends. With looking at the historical trends and the current revenues, we also look at future expenses, also such as O&amp;M, for instance, the CIP plan that was brought forward to council. We also take those O&amp;M costs and plug those in into the expenses. This gives us a good multi-year forecasting and allows for us to see what the, how the sustainability is of the general governmental funds and to, for programs and services. And with that, we then forecast with the policies, look at the policies for the city council, for the city, and how the ongoing revenues equal to the ongoing expenses. So with the revenue forecasting, as I mentioned, what we do is we start early in the process and we subscribe to a forecast group out of University of Arizona, which allows us access to raw data. And we have a program that we put that raw data in, and it kind of forecasts the, how the sales tax and the economy is going. But then what we do is we pare it down to what the city of Mesa looks like and how those trends have been, what the population is, the economic growth is, because it is, the information we get is more statewide and more Phoenix area-based. So then we kind of pare that down to see to the relevant and, the relevant economic indicators for the city of Mesa, such as population growth, wages, unemployment, items like that. And then also, any economic development, growth activities that are going on within the city. Also, it includes, as mentioned before, we've been discussing this for the past couple of years, it does include an economic correction that we do have it starting in fiscal year 2021 out in the forecast. So the next slide I show here is the general governmental revenues. These are the city sales tax and the state shared sales tax. And just to show kind of the growth that the city has been going, and with the outer years, as I mentioned, with 2021, we're showing a slight correction where the revenues...
That's the soundtrack for your presentation.
Works with, works for me.
You're really rocking it, so. Sorry.
So with that, the economic correction, we see a slowdown in the, in the revenues with the economic correction. But then after the 2122 fiscal year, it does start coming out of that correction, and the revenues start, start increasing. So the numbers behind that chart is the general governmental operating sources. And as I mentioned, the local sales tax is up top, and then we have the state shared revenues, the next. And those comprise, those are the biggest portions of our revenues. As, with that, and then we also show the enterprise fund transfer and any other transfers into the general fund. And some of those transfers are the, oh, shoot, sources, transfers in, could be grants and other items for O&amp;M. The, what we have, we are showing, as you go through from year by year for the fiscal year, we are seeing a slowdown in residential housing permit revenues from year over year. So this time period last year, we are seeing a slowdown in the residential revenue. So that's why we kind of have a slowdown in the, our revenues as a total also. We're seeing a slowdown in, and being conservative with the sales tax.
And when we say slowdown, that means we just came off like the best year ever?
Right.
So it's like, it's, you know, we're not going to be able to maintain that pace, but it's still a very good number. It's just down from a peak year. So be careful. We don't want to suggest it's a precipitous drop, but it has definitely, we've seen a slower than our historic high.
Mr. Thompson?
Here's, when we're looking at the permit change, how is it comparing to when we were first coming out of the recession, when really the housing started picking back up? Looking at that compared to now, what's, do you know, have a sense for what that looks like?
Well, again, the last previous two years, we had significant increases. And we were leading the Valley of the State, right, in permits. And we see that, right? We can see that in some of the larger subdivisions that were coming online and the growth that was taking place there. We're still seeing a robust growth. It's just the pace is probably slowed down a little bit. And we would, I think we would say, even where we're in this year and next year, it's still going to be much significant than when we were even just coming out of the recession before. So we're, we're still at a pretty healthy number, but we're just suggesting, we kind of felt like we met a peak at least year, and we've kind of, it's come down a little bit. But we don't want to suggest that it's relative to a historic high. But it's still comparative to the history. It's still a pretty good year, is what we're seeing. I think, is that?
That's correct. And when we look at that, that kind of goes into our contracting sales tax as well. And we always take that into account. We don't expect that a good year in contracting sales tax is going to last, you know, for the next 10 years. So we take that into account, that permits lead into contracting sales tax. And so we take that into account when we do the forecast, that there may be those ebbs and flows of contracting.
One of the things we did, I remember Christine mentioning to us, is while we've seen a little bit of slowdown on the residential, we're seeing much more activity is on the commercial side of things. So there's a little bit of a change in the mix of the types of permits we're also getting.
Jeremy?
I have a question. Does this, the projected forecast take into effect the fact that we raised the actual sales tax rate from 1.75 to 2? Is that what we raised it to?
Are you asking about the, the amount or the rate of increase?
Right. Well, so for the projected rate of increase, if I'm understanding the chart correctly, I think it's saying it's going to increase?
So this does not include the public safety sales tax, because we will track that separately. And so because it has dedicated uses for it, it'll be a separately identified, but it'll follow, it'll trend like this, right? But at a lower amount. But the amount, the dollars coming in for the public safety sales tax will be tracked in its own, or creating a fund?
Same fund. So the public safety sales tax, because it was a ballot measure, is a restricted fund. And so you won't find it in the general governmental funds at all.
Oh, okay.
So it will follow the same trend, except that it's starting at zero, right? So it's going to go up. But it's going to follow the same trend going up with the 2.9. But it's in a, it's in a restricted fund. So you won't see it in this presentation at all.
Oh, not even in future years? It wouldn't fall under the local sales tax line?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, the local sales tax is the revenue source, but this is still by fund. So for example, what you don't see in here is the streets. So we have a portion of our local sales tax that has, is for just streets, restricted only to streets funding. And the dollar amount is not, so we see that 152 million, that dollar amount, that streets portion is also not in that number.
Got it.
They'll follow the same trend.
Sure.
But it won't be in the number.
But Council, you'll see that, like the streets number, when streets come, we'll talk about that. Because the activity in the streets fund is dictated by that collection that comes in on that, what is it, 0.3?
0.3.
0.3 percent.
Okay, thank you.
And there are the attributed expenses for those, you know, anticipated expenditures for those are also separated.
Jan, could you turn on your microphone?
Good, thank you.
I'm sorry, Council.
So then I would assume, since that is in a restricted account, you know, for streets, for public safety.
Yeah.
The attributed expenditures for that are also not included in this.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, 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 it's a good question.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Does, I see on number one, amounts do not include carryover. Are you anticipating any carryover of any funding?
Each year, so, Mayor, Vice Mayor Freeman, so each year, at the end of the year, there'll be the fiscal year end, where we'll have either revenues or expenses that have not been collected yet at that time. And so it's really just a kind of a line in the sand where one fiscal year ends and one fiscal year begins. And that's really, when we hear that word, that term "carryover," that's usually what we're applying to.
Okay.
State statute requires that we adopt one fiscal year at a time. And if any revenues or expenses occur in the following fiscal year, we have to re-adopt those numbers. And so you'll hear that say "carryover" a lot.
That's a term that's more likely used when we talk about expenditures.
Expenditures.
Where an obligation or a contract may be issued in one fiscal year, but it carries over into the next fiscal year. So sometimes we have to carry over the appropriations, the budget amount to cover those expenses in the subsequent year. And that's usually where that takes place.
Yeah, thanks for the refresher. I remember now.
So Mayor, Council, with that, the next slide, what I wanted to show is isolate the local sales tax for the city. And as you notice, the city is heavily reliant on the retail sales for the revenues for the general governmentals. And then also, a decent amount of revenue comes from those rentals. And then also, as Candace mentioned earlier, the green line down at the bottom is the contracting. And we do see a, we are forecasting a slowdown in the contracting, and that is related to the economic correction that we have forecasted. So moving on, we have the, the next slide is the state shared revenues. And so the top is the state income tax, or the urban revenue sharing, as you might hear also. And it is with the growth. And then also, we show the state, state sales tax. Those are the two primary, the two, the most that we get from the state shared revenues. And that also includes the economic correction out in 2021 and 2122. And if you notice, the state shared sales tax, it slows down a little bit in 2021, 22. But then the urban revenue sharing spikes up and then slows down out in 2223. That is because there is, reminder, there is a two-year lag of when the cities receive the state shared income tax for, through the state. So moving on to the, the operational expenditure forecast, the expenditure categories we analyze and we look at individually. The big ones are the personal services and what affects those. And that is primarily the pension rates, the medical premiums, and then also any salary movements. Then we look at also other service and commodities. And we look at the large contracts separately, but then also look at consumer price index. And that is applied to all the general expenses that we have. And then we look at the capital. And as I mentioned before, the multi-year plans are developed and included in the forecast for vehicle replacements or for the operations and maintenance of the facilities. And with the pension included in, in the expenditure forecast is the PSPRS, or Public Safety Retirement Contribution. The contribution rates both increased for police and fire. They're now at 56%. Arizona State Retirement Contribution increased and is now at 12.11%. And then medical premiums also increased, is increasing at 8%. But that also is, is consistent with last year's forecast.
So Brian, explain what that means, a contribution rate. What does that mean? 56% of what? What is that telling us?
So 56% of the, of the portion that the, of the public safety retirement is contributed by the, the city.
So taking their salaries, pension is 50, that's right. It's just an growing increase in that percentage of pensions, or, sorry, of the salary here, it's how much we have to contribute in pension. They're related to the earnings versus what we have to pay in pension. So as earnings go up, as whether it's by cost of living increases, or merit pay, or adding new officers, our percentage, this is the percentage we pay off of the salaries.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. So, Mayor, Council, and that's similar to the Arizona State Retirement, where it is capped at the 12.11%. So as salaries increase, that percentage is, and the dollar amount increases. And that's same with public safety. As it was last year, it was at 50% for police and 52% for fire. Now it's raised to 56%. And that is calculated as the, as the salaries increase, so will the city's contribution increase by that percentage.
Thank you.
Quick question. Is there a dollar amount figure that will be, from that 50 to 56, 52, 56 change, is there a dollar amount figure that you all have, or would that be?
Go to the next slide.
So with the...
Yeah, we'll show, it's right here on the next slide.
Is it right there?
Yeah. Well, it's, I guess it's from one year to the next.
It's one year to the next.
Yeah, the seven and a half million is. Go ahead, talk about that. There is an increase, yes.
So there is an increase for the unfunded liability. As we mentioned with the, we, the city selected the 30, but we are doing a 25-year plan pay-down for, for the city. And with that, on the next slide, as you notice, we are, the top line, we have, for the current year, if you go down to the bottom, our current year is $50.1 million city.
That's what we're paying this year, for this year. And this is police and fire combined.
So that is for the, what we are currently have budgeted for fiscal year 18, 19.
Excuse me, Brian?
Yes.
Mr. Luna has a question.
No, I had a question. Chris, I don't know, maybe you can help me remember. We are waiting on a decision on PSPRS, on a lawsuit that was pending. Has that been resolved? And the full effect?
Yes, it's, it's all built into here now, yes. Which is impacting us negatively.
What's the difference? Do you know?
I don't know how much just the lawsuit increased it, because there's like multiple factors in here. It's the lawsuit making up for the payments we weren't making, but this also has...
Changes in, changes in assumptions on interest earned.
This has a lot of, this is like maybe five or six factors in here, the calculation on return, the calculation of how long people are going to live, the factor that we're having to play catch-up on the contributions we weren't making prior to the lawsuit and now having to make up for that. I don't know, Ryan, there's maybe two more I'm not thinking about. Are those the largest ones? Am I missing one? There's a lot of things that go into the numbers here. I think I covered maybe half.
I'm another deputy budget director. One of the factors that we've been looking at recently that is driving a lot of this growth in the pension rate, other than the lawsuit, that's by far the biggest. The whole permanent benefit increase situation that switched, was recently switched to a COLA with recent reforms. The other, the other issue that is driving this is the assumption that PSPRS makes about our payroll growth. So they assume every year, they were assuming a 4% payroll growth every year. So either new positions or pay, pay increases. We looked recently at what we'd been having as payroll growth on average over the last 10 years, and it was about 1%. So they're assuming our base of payroll was increasing at 4% or 3.5%, and it only has increased at 1%. So that has been driving a lot of the increases year to year. With the new public safety sales tax, that, the new positions that we bring on as part of that, that will help that payroll base to actually increase more rapidly, as they are assuming it will. So that shouldn't be an issue as big of an issue going forward, because the payroll base will be growing more rapidly.
Now, Mayor, Council, Ryan said something very important. So what we're going to do inside of that conversation we were just started about, the public safety sales tax. So what we will do is every position that is hired, new positions that are hired under the public safety sales tax, will be fully loaded. So it's not only their salaries, but their benefits, including the pension. So we're kind of keeping those positions separate than what's happening that's currently in this group here. Now, we may add other positions in addition to the sales tax, but any position that we identify that's being funded by the public safety sales tax will also include the pension contribution.
Full compensation.
Full compensation.
So it's calculated at 156% of their salary?
Yeah, that's what we'll end up putting in there, yeah.
Plus, plus medical and any other.
Yeah, all, every, everything.
Training equipment, everything that goes along with personnel.
If I could, I know some of the conversations that we've had in previous years. And if we can jump back to the previous slide, obviously, employees that we hire under ASRS, you know, it looks like we're, if I'm reading this correctly, paying 112% of their salary versus, in PSPRS, we're paying 156% of their salary. And we had conversation in regards to identifying some of the roles of public safety and seeing which employees we could shift outside of PSPRS, which, which hiring positions would fall under ASRS versus PSPRS. So I'm just curious what the update is, is how many positions have we identified in our public safety department that we've shifted to, the words escaping me.
Civilians. Yep, perfect.
Civilians.
No, thank you, Councilmember Whitaker and Mayor. So that's something we do every year. We have, I forget, we can go back, because I'd say the last three years, we have made significant progress and conversion of that. And so that's something we meet with.
And so that's something we meet with the chief. We talk about that, about identifying those positions. So that's something when we bring the Public Safety Departments forward, we'll continue to try to identify more of those positions that we can move from using a civilian who would fit under ASRS versus hiring, having someone in the position of a sworn officer doing those positions. But that is something, is an ongoing process every year. So we'll continue to look at that.
There's something I didn't quite grasp that you mentioned earlier. And I understand, obviously, we're, we're better off hiring folks into, into the state retirement system as opposed to PSPRS because the contribution from our perspective is much lower. But it's also, I know there's been a lot of reform in the PSPRS and we've created new tiers and the new hires are on a different, you know, tier than the older, older folks. Is there a benefit in the payroll base increases, is the word I heard? Is there a, a benefit for us to add? Because we're on, we're on the verge of a huge hiring of new Public Safety employees with the 4% sales tax. Is that in effect going to help us in some regard because the payroll base of Public Safety people increases? And so we have more people contributing to the PSPRS system? Or is it a necessary problem that we're just going to increase our very generous payroll or pension plan recipients?
Mayor, the way, the way that works is that it's really the unfunded liability portion of that. So as we hire more people, they are going to be in the tier three. So the tier three contributions are different than folks that are in the tier one or the tier two. The real piece to that is the unfunded liability portion. What they're doing is they're taking the unfunded liability portion and spreading that over our entire base of salary. So what happens is the larger our base, the smaller the percentage with the same dollar. So they say, take that dollar amount for the fiscal year and that's what we need to pay into the pension to pay for the unfunded liability. And that percentage is really, they back into that percentage based on what they think our salaries are going to be.
So Mayor, we're going to spread that liability across all officers. We're not going to discriminate about whether they're in the current system or they're in the old system. When we cost out, because that's the way they do it, right? They just look at the entire payroll and that's how they apply the rate, or yeah, apply the rate. So we're, we will have every sworn officer, when we allocate costs, it'll be irregardless of whether they're in the Public Safety Finance Fund or whether they're in the existing fund. We will, we will appropriate or appropriate, we will allocate the liability, the unfunded liability across all officers because that's how it's being applied from the pension fund to us.
Right.
That's how we'll look at it.
Correct. So, so Mayor, if we, if we were to add a whole bunch of positions and add a lot of salary, the rate may go from 56 down to 55, let's say, but it will be the same dollar amount. So the dollar amount doesn't change. The dollar amount is what stays static. The rate is, they back into the rate based on the number of people, the salaries, total dollars of our salaries. And that's how they get the rate. So you'll see the rates fluctuate as our salaries fluctuate, but the dollar amount that we have to contribute for the unfunded liability portion remains about the same.
Yeah, and that's, it's just the pension includes not only for these active employees to make sure we have the benefits to pay for them when they retire, but what's happening too is everybody's paying for the liability, the unfunded liability that allows those that have already retired to continue to get their benefits. So it's spread across everybody.
And the, the total of our unfunded PSPRS liability right now is like 500 million?
It is, yes, Mayor. It is for, this fiscal year it is 564 million. Next year it'll be 599 million.
What percentage is that?
Of?
Of the entire, of the fund? Like 49% funded?
Oh, yes, it is. So police will be, is about 47% funded and fire is just over 50% funded.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could add, that 56% contribution rate, it's not up there anymore, but the 56% contribution rate, 40% of that is for the unfunded liability. 16% is what they call the normal cost or the benefits, it's paying for the benefits accrued during that year. So, and to Councilmember Whitaker's point earlier, the savings you get from civilianization, it's not, it's not the difference between 56% and 12%. It's really the difference between the, the 16% normal cost and the 12% if that makes sense. It's still, it's still cheaper, but it's not drastically.
We're ultimately going to have to keep paying the 40%.
Because the 40%, you have to pay, no matter how, how many employees you have.
Well, how many years are we into our 25-year repayment plan?
Three?
Three.
Three.
Three years.
Well, this, yeah, we're in year, this is year 24 we're in and year 20, next year's year 23.
Okay.
I think it's important to point out though, Ryan, there's another variable involved, right? The other question becomes who's better at managing the money, PSPRS or ASRS? And I think if you look at it historically, we know where that answer lies, right? So it's not just the difference between 16 and 12, but rather which fund we put them in, who's going to better manage that money moving forward?
And Councilman Whitaker, and just street out salaries, right? The cost of a sworn officer versus a civilian, the pay scale? You know, for, you know, put aside the pension for a second, just the cost, if I can find, so we've done this, right? We have individuals who go out and do crime scene investigations. They're highly trained scientists that are civilians and that's, and they do a great job. But, and versus having a detective or a patrol officer doing it, which is wonderful. But we pay them and we, what our cost for them is better used to have them out on patrol where they can exercise their authorities and having people that are highly trained and doing the, the investigations on the crime scene. And so we save significant, we, we maximize our benefit of our, our resources by putting the officer on the street. And the, what I pay an officer to patrol the street versus what I pay a crime scene officer is significantly different. And that's how it helps us too. So there's like an immediate, like benefit to the city on those, on that civilianization and those, and that example.
Okay.
I think we're done with pension. We'll move on. Thank you, Ryan.
So Mayor Council, the next slide is the expenditure forecast also with transfers to other funds. And the big one is the Transit, Transit Fund, which funds bus, light rail and dialeride. And with that, with the Gilbert, the big one there is the Gilbert Light Rail Extension is included in the forecast and it'll be about a $2.9 million annual estimated increase in expenses. Net, and that is the net of the, of revenues. Next slide here is just to wrap up the, the general governmental expenditures. As you noticed, the, the operating expenditures are up top, personal services, other services, commodities. And then we also have transfers to the capital fund and other funds. And the, notice the, the increase and kind of the trend over the last couple of years. This shows the actuals and then for last fiscal year are projected for fiscal year 18, 19. And then what are, what we're forecasting for the next budget for 19, 20. And the trend with the, the personal services increasing, but then also the, the other services and commodities kind of decreasing with that, the personal services are increasing. And with that, the departments are having to compensate for those increases by decreasing some of their commodities and other services to be able to fund the personal services.
So where we're in this slide, Mayor Council, and we'll see this here in a minute in a trend. But here's the concern we have, it's the trend analysis. So if you look at that personal services trend as far as the rate of growth, whether it's new positions or whether it's benefit or a cost of personnel, you can see the change from 17, 18 to 18, 19 was over 6%. Now, if you go back to our revenues, we didn't have any of the revenues that were going, that were growing that fast. So you have a significant portion of our expenditures, personal services, that's growing at a rate faster than we're receiving, than our sources. And so, you know, while we're really good financial position today, that trend is not sustainable. And so we're going to have to be very careful, especially on personal services, in making sure that doesn't continue to over, be greater than the trend of resources. Because eventually you'll see it, you'll see how we're drawing down reserves as these expenditures exceed the amount of resources in one year. And so that's just something we're trying to be very sensitive to. We have a good track record of, of keeping significant fund balances, but you'll start to see how they're starting to be slowly reduced because of the effects of these kinds of trends. So it's just something we're being very cautious about going into the future.
Mr. Ready, personal services, is that the same as personnel services? I mean, what, can you define personal services?
Well, it's everything, and I think we had the chart in the back, but it's everything related to the salaries, the benefits, the pension, overtime.
Medical.
Medical benefits, all those are fully loaded. And this, I mean, we're, that's what we do. We provide services, so it's going to be, it's over 70% of our total general fund. Well, that's, but that's what we do. But again, but that rate of growth in that particular area is at a higher rate than the total increase in our sources of funds coming into the city. And so we're going to have to be very careful and watch that trend out into the future.
Jeremy?
Got a question on that note, Chris. I know you're concerned about the 6% growth on the 309 million, but what about the 32% and the 20%?
I mean, those, those are significant, those are much easier to control. You can see how they fluctuate significantly from year to year. Because a lot of, some of those may be one-time costs, they may be ramping up because of a capital project. We can manage those and as a, if you look at the relative impact as far as the dollar amount, it's much less than personal services. Yes, it's a concern. The greater impact is in the personal services area, but it's a fair point. But I get the most impact by managing the personal services.
Because it's ongoing.
It's ongoing, exactly, that's a better way of saying it, yeah. Other services could be a contract, commodities could be chemicals. So those things, some of those we can manage a lot easier.
And what do you attribute the 6.1% growth to? Is it actual salary increases or just adding more employees?
I think it's a combination of all those. We've been pretty, you know, we both in police and fire, before the sales tax, we added quite a few positions. And then across the board and other areas. But we're also have, we did, we had a 5% merit pay in that year, I believe that is correct. And we had increases in pension and.
Pension increases would be the big one.
Pension increases. So all those are getting absorbed into that number. So it's just something, every time we add another body into the budget, that becomes an impact. So we just have to be very careful with that.
Mr. Freeman made, I think last year we, I thought we had kind of across the board 4% increases, but we did make some, we did some market studies in public safety and we did some kind of one-time catch-up raises. So I'm wondering how we got from 4% plus, maybe a little plus on that to catch up in some categories? What's, what's the difference between the four to five to get to the 6.1?
Well, again, probably pension, because pension went up by more than 6%. Benefits went up about 6%. So there's, other than pay, there was, pension is probably the easiest one to point to. I mean, you just saw the number from the prior, prior year. I mean, this going up by six, seven million dollars, or so, hold on, from year to year, it's probably going up four, $5 million a year in pension, which is closer to eight or nine percent, eight, seven or eight percent probably. So that's, that's probably where the biggest pressure is coming from. And new bodies, new positions, that adds to.
Clarify, on the pension, you said it went from being 50% contribution to 56. That's an, that's over a 10% increase, right? Relative to the starting number?
True.
It's increasing.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, I'm looking at just actual dollars on here, but I'm kind of doing it on my head. So maybe I'm a little low.
Seven point, because if you look at the, just on the PSPRS on slide 11, current rate 18, 19 is 50, 50.1. So going into next year is 57.8. So that's a, that you're looking at almost seven, you know, over $7 million there. And that, that was more than 10%. That wasn't as great of an increase as we experienced in those, in the past years.
It was or it wasn't?
Was not.
Okay.
Because we had some, because of the, we're still, we're still, right, we had one year where it was an $8 million impact to us in one year.
So you may, you may, I'm probably understating that impact, that percentage impact.
No, I'm just saying the slide 10 on the previous slide, if the contribution rate on that first bullet line item goes from 50 to 56, that's over a 10% increase relative to the starting amount.
Correct, good point.
So we take all that and we kind of put it all together and take a look at the financial sustainability of the city. And what we focus on is the sufficient ongoing revenues to cover the current and new ongoing needs of the city and, and put it all together to see what the sustainability is. And with that, we go to the next slide, which is the, this slide shows the past years, the past four years of actuals for the general governmental fund balance. We have, I summed it up to total sources, which is all the revenues and then total uses, the expenditures. And you see a, with the economy being, being good as it is, we sustain, we're able to sustain a positive net sources and uses and a ending reserve fund balance of just over 20%. But with that trend, we go to the next, the next page. And as we've mentioned before, with the, the personal services and the expenditures growing at a higher rate than what our revenues are coming in, if we, the trend, if we continue that, then our net sources and uses start becoming negative and we start drawing down on the ending reserve balance. And as you notice down below, our ending reserve balance percentage starts decreasing through the outer years. And then as, throughout the forecast, through forecast, the fiscal year 22, 23, we have 11% fund balance reserve.
So Mayor, the good council, Mayor Council, good news is we stay within our forecast, or our policy of the reserves of what they should be about 10% throughout the forecast period. So that's the good news. But you can see the trend in here. But let's be careful too, because the actuals are actuals. Actuals are what comes in at the end of the year for revenues or for uses and sources and uses. The forecast is a different animal. It's, we're, we're very conservative in the forecast. We assume almost all expenditures will be made. We assume a very conservative, you saw forecast, we build in downturns in the economy. We keep a very modest rate of growth in the tax base. So the forecast is much more conservative than the, what the actuals are. But at the same time, it helps us to identify trends. And that's what this is all about, is just kind of the direction we're going. So you can see that while there's a drawdown in the early years, it's not significant, but it does start picking up pace in the out year. Some of that's being driven and we'll, and we can adjust, right? It's how fast we bring on some of the projects that were approved in the bond package and how fast we bring those on and the impact those operational costs have into, those are built into here. And so we have to, we'll may have to, you know, adjust some of those projects. Maybe the downturn doesn't come as soon as we thought, or maybe it's not as deep. But right now, this is our forecast, just to kind of give us a sense of the direction of trending of what's happening. So it's actually, it's a good forecast for the city, but it's a cautionary forecast that we need to be careful about looking at decisions we make today, how they impact on those later years.
That's it for general.
So that's, that's it for the general governmental fund. Next, we'll move on to the enterprise fund. And the enterprise fund, the operations is we, we look at each utility as a separate business center. And same with the, the general governmental fund, we, with the, the enterprise fund, we look at a 8% to 10% for the, for the reserve balance, not to go below the 8, 10% of the city policy. And then we take a look at the ending reserves to see what, how to smooth either rate adjustments or any other projects or new programs that are coming through that year. So we do similar to the, with the general governmental. We take a look for the sources, the forecasting. We, we work, we collaborate with the, the utility departments and take a look at statistical analysis, but also collaborate with them on trends and what's, what they're seeing as, what they're seeing in the trends. But also what we do is we put that information into our statistical software and then apply any other correlations between any economic trends or utility sources. And with that, we also take a look and we have factored in an economic correction in there for the, the consumption, but also the sales tax that we get from it. And then also what we've done here too is what this forecast includes for the revenue is, includes, is what's been mentioned to council a couple of times before, is a fall implementation of the rate adjustment process, which results in no rate adjustments from July 2019 through January 2020. So what that means is normally we've come to council with a rate adjustment during the budget process that starts, any adjustments start July 1 of the next fiscal year. Since we're delaying this process to the fall timeframe, we'll be coming to council with just. Since we're delaying this process to the fall timeframe, we'll be coming to council with just the rate adjustments in the fall. And what that will do is, we will have a February one implementation of the, any rate adjustments that is approved by council. So what that does is, it gives the, uh, the residents, the, uh, for the customers, actually, the customers, eight month, um, eight months of no rate increases or adjustments uh, from July one, from where they would normally see a rate adjustment pushed out to February one. And what that also does is, it relieves the, the customers, especially the residential, the high usage months. When we do a rate adjustment, it's usually in July, it's a higher usage of electric, of water. And what that does is pushes it out to February first, to where it's a low consumption month for, for those.
Um, excuse me, Mr. Luna.
Oh, I, I remember talking to Kerry about this. So you base your, your water rates on what you use in the winter, and then you enact them in, in July? Is that what we were doing?
Yes, what we were doing is, we were forecasting, we would take a six-month forecast. So basically, from the current fiscal year, we'd take from July one to December, and then forecast out the rest of the year. And we would be basing that, basing the next year's rate adjustments on that forecast to see what, uh, what the utility, what the enterprise fund and the utilities' rate adjustment was. What this does now is, it gives us, by pushing it out to the fall timeframe, it gives us the whole fiscal year and any closing adjustments and any bond refundings that we have. We can take that and get the actuals for that year, and then be able to forecast what we need for the, the next fiscal year and on for our forecast.
But Councilman Luna, I think what, when we talk about the winter average, we, that's the number we use to calculate your wastewater fee? Your wastewater, that's what we applied, wastewater, not your water rate.
Okay.
Because we don't meter wastewater, so we don't want to include any outdoor usage, so we use the, a winter, we call it a water average, to use that, to apply that to your rate for the rest of the year. So that's a little different than this, but that is, that's something we would continue to do, yeah.
Is that standard amongst, like, water utilities?
Yeah, it's very, that's how everybody does it, yeah.
Uh, so my other, uh, I'm, I'm not honestly, is this a new policy that you're talking about implementing, where you delay this? I'm a little confused by what you're saying, to be completely honest.
Well, Mayor, we brought this up, I think, um, a few months ago, where we talked about the idea of not moving forward with rate increases during the budget discussion and deferring those later. For the advantage of, one, we saw that it, we spent a lot of time on rates, and we need to have maybe a separate discussion from the budget on the specific rates, because there's a lot going on right now in our rates, whether it relates to debt service and new debt. And we're still working through some of those conversations. But we also recognize this was having a significant impact on our customers by having these conversations and applying the rates in July at the high-peak months. And we felt like it would be better, and we watched some of the other cities around the valley who've, who've waited into the fall to have their rate conversations. And it seemed to make a lot more sense to us also, is to wait and have that discussion in fall. That way, the rates could be then applied later on, almost in the wintertime. Um, and again, for us, this also kind of, I know that there's been an interest in kind of looking at maybe some rate relief for the customers. So this gives eight months of rate relief built in. And then we have an opportunity in the fall to have a conversation with the council about rates or no rates, or whatever it might be, and the impacts of that. And so we'll have that discussion in the fall. So we think that allows this budget process to move forward, it helps our customers, and it provides immediate rate relief for the next eight months.
So this is a new policy that we're implementing, in which, as opposed to discussing our rate increases during budget season, now, we're just simply shifting that off to.
It was due in the fall time, yeah.
And at which point, once we have that conversation, the rate increases then would immediately take effect after we decide?
Yeah, if, if the council were to approve a rate, and we don't want to presume anything, then they would be effective, and what we've built into our assumptions is they would be effective in.
How do you determine what your budget, uh, don't you need to be able to fluctuate rates determining what your budget looks like?
It's not any different than the, than general government fund, right? We, we assume revenues, we assume what's gonna come in during the year, during the, in the general fund. Uh, we don't have an absolute certainty of that either. And so this isn't any different, it's just part of our forecasting. So we're comfortable that, the way the fund sits today, we can go for six or seven months without the rate increase and then have a discussion with council about what those impacts would be. If the council decides, you know, we'll, we'll share with you what our assumptions are in rates, but we will, the, the decision about what the rates will be will be made later. And we would, you know, if the council reduces the rates or increases the rates, we adjust the budgets accordingly. Right now, the, you're gonna see this fund is very similar to the general government fund. It has very healthy reserves right now. Again, it's about the trend, it's about the cost of capital and utilities and how fast those projects come online. We, um, are building, have built, and are building significant infrastructure right now, and the impact those have on the budget. So, um, that's really the conversation that we'll be having.
Mr. Freeman?
So by doing that, you're, you're, what I'm interpreting is not, you, we usually do it every twelve months, this budgeting or forecasting for rate increases. We're delaying it by six months or so, seven months. So we'll probably have better data and, and economic news to evaluate whether we do or do not make rate increases.
Yeah, I think.
So you're having almost twenty months or so of, of additional data.
And it just feels better to be having a rate conversation in the winter than talking about rate increases in the summer. And that's what really started concerning us, because we were looking at the immediate impact of the rates, the council, that we may have to apply, whether it's electric or water. It was an immediate impact on customers, and it really doesn't give them the chance to adjust. And, you know, in the year, in the last time we made significant rate adjustments or the, the modeling of our rate, it was intended to have higher rates to encourage conservation. There's actually tiers where we're raising the rate, because we know that most of that consumption is outdoor consumption. And the idea is, if you want to have outdoor consumption, you're gonna pay a little bit higher price for that than those who are using it for just the, kind of, the everyday living. Again, that's not the term we use, but whatever the term we use. And so we purposely achieve that, but we also did it right in July. So we didn't give the people who were, you know, trying to change or give them the opportunity to adjust their usage, outdoor usage, really much time to do it. The, so the thought is, we do it in the winter, we have the, the adjustments, whatever they might be, and it gives people plenty of time to make those adjustments before the high-peak periods.
So on the next slide is the, the enterprise sources, and this is the, the revenue for each individual enterprise, uh, utility for the enterprise fund. And so fiscal year, the nineteen-twenty forecast, with that, what is forecasted in there is this delay in the rate adjustment process. So the, the rates include no rate adjustment for those eight months. And then what we've done is, applied the rate adjustment that was presented to council last May in that rate adjustment process for the outer years. But as mentioned, we would come back in the fall with a, a new forecast with the year-end data, and then we can, then we would discuss a rate adjustment there. But for right now, we inputted the, what our current rate is for right now, but then also the rate adjustment that was part of the forecast presented to council last, last year. So on to the, the uses forecasting, uh, the, the big uses that the utilities encounter, we take a look at. And it's the commodity costs, the, the commodity for the water costs, any wastewater treatment plant chemicals, uh, the solid waste tipping fees, any big contracts such as the recycling also. Uh, we take a look at those to see what those contracts are and, and put it in. But then also, we take a look at the debt service payments and take a look at, for those debt service payments throughout the forecast. So the next slide shows the, the forecast and actually the, um, year-over-year comparison for the enterprise uses. As you notice, the, the operating, the, the operating, uh, uses are at the top, but then we also have the transfers in the middle down below, and then the, uh, subtotal, and then the grand total of those. As you notice, as kind of the trend, it is increasing, um, by about five percent, six percent, uh, year-over-year. And then what we do is, we put the revenues and expenditures all together, and the sources and uses. And then we come up with our, our net sources and uses table, which you, you've, uh, familiar with when we present, uh, last year. This is a, a smaller version of it, and it has each individual utility up top, and then also the, the nonutilities, and then the, uh, the totals down below. And as you noticed, the, the trend also here is, um, the net sources and uses is, is going, is going a little bit negative. And that is due to some of the, the construction costs of the signal buit and debt service. And also just the increased, uh, we're seeing an increase in water commodity costs, also recycling fees. And that is all inputted into here. And as you notice, the, the ending reserve balance percentage is decreasing. But as Chris, uh, City Manager mentioned, uh, it still does have a healthy fund balance to where we were able to, uh, delay the rate increase due to the healthy fund balance that the enterprise fund has right now.
Brian, just a question at the bottom, are these dollars in thousands or millions?
These are in thousands.
They're in thousands, okay.
Yeah, Mayor Vice Mayor, these are in thousands.
The slide says dollars and millions, and so is that, do we need to correct that?
This one, oh, this one says thousands, sorry. I apologize, Mayor.
Oh, I'm, oh, I think you're on it, that, I'm a, I'm a slide behind you, I guess, yeah.
This one, this one was, uh, slide twenty-two is in millions?
In millions.
Slide twenty-three is in thousands.
Oh, sorry, we shifted on you.
Yeah.
We'll convert them back to being the same. We went from, hopefully, we went from millions to thousands. Because if not, we, we have some trouble.
Can we go back to twenty-two for just a second?
Sure.
So just, uh, it looks like the, the cost of the commodity of water continues to increase. The, the CAP and, uh, but we, we get a, water is coming more and more expensive for us to buy as a commodity. Is that a fair way to summarize what this is? That, that there's a five point three percent increase in the cost of water?
Mayor, yes.
Okay.
And it's, and it's, Jake and Jesse are here. Um, it's not only, I mean, we, come on up. It's not just, I mean, it is the cost of water, but it's the cost to treat the water.
Yes.
Right? So we have contracts on the water, and we know what that is. And they, and they can, they can tell you what our cost of water is in our portfolio. But I think what impacts you too is the.
It's the cost of the treatment.
Treating, treating the water, the chemicals, the labor and all, go ahead.
The water quality, the, the, right now, with regards to all the rains that we, even though that's beneficial and stuff, you've got to see, Central Arizona Project is releasing water from Lake Pleasant. So that water's got a more poor quality than the water that we usually get out of the canal. So that increases what we need to do to treat the water, to get it presentable, to be able to deliver it to our customers. So as well as you've got the water, you've got water releasing from the Salt River, which is doing other things. But that's not impacting our plants, but it's more the water quality and the systems that is increasing the cost of the commodity, of the, of the chemicals. So we usually, if we plan for that, and we know it's coming, it's not a shock to us. Uh, it's just something that we live with every year.
Because we have contracts for the CAP water, we know what those are, but the other can be, like, the quality of water can be.
And CAP, CAP sets their rates every other year, so they, they do it, they do their adjustments in the odd years that they plan for the next year, so that, yeah, I believe the, the rate increases are usually on even years, but they plan throughout in the odd years. So we have those in our, in our forecast. We understand, we plan, we prepare for those cost increases annually.
So the cost of the commodity, either from CAP or from SRP or from the multiple sources, that's going up some.
It goes up some, but I would say Jake's biggest impact is, is the treatment cost, chemicals and everything else. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, and electricity.
Electricity, the power.
And also bringing on, they talked about signal buit, bringing on the labor and, and starting up a new plant also contributed.
Okay. And I, and I noticed though that the, the cost is actually going down, percent decrease, three percent decrease, two percent decrease in water, in wastewater and electric. Uh, is that because our, our new wastewater plants are online and, or why are we seeing a decrease there, a projected decrease?
Some of which, but I think it's more, um, the improvements that we're doing at the plants. We are seeing less water because of the, the low-flow usage in some of the houses and stuff, which is, we're gonna be having a future conversation of what our water portfolio looks like and, you know, the value of that effluent and how we need to make better use of that, that's.
We're getting less wastewater from some of the new subdivisions. But that's good on one hand, but we need, we actually, someone's wastewater is actually our water, part of our water. Effluent is part of our water portfolio, so we actually need more wastewater. I don't know, yeah, I don't know. But we'll talk, we're gonna talk about this in the future, because we have arrangements where we allow our treated water and we flow it to GRIK. And then in exchange, we get water rights. But if we're not sending them enough water, because our residents are being so water conservation conscious, and that's becoming a challenge for us. But we have some, we have some ideas and solutions how to achieve that, so.
Well, we'll look forward to the rate discussion then, later this fall.
Yeah.
Jen?
Um, I just had one question. Maybe I asked it the other day and forgot the answer, but does it make any assumptions about population increases or increases of commercial uses, as we've seen significant increases in both recently? Or is it for budgeting purposes to use, use static figures?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, we do take into consideration population growth and account growth throughout the forecast. So we do take a percentage and see what the population growth is. We look at the developments. But then we also take a look at, uh, also any new companies that may have broken ground that are coming in and, uh, and things like that. So we do, it's not just status quo, we do have a growth in, in the forecast.
Jake and Jesse actually have a forecast model that goes out to twenty forty?
Yes.
Twenty forty, on consumption, of how much more water we're gonna need each year, based on population growth and all those mixes.
And then when you project a downturn in the economy, does that play into the enterprise funds? Or is that just simply on the sales tax side?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, that does play in on, on the consumption side also. Uh, what we did is, we took a look at, uh, we took a look at the Great Recession, but we also took a look at the, uh, the, the recessions from the early nineties and the early two thousands and took a look at the consumption there, and just to see, but, so it does affect both the sales tax, but then also consumption.
But it's not as high a impact.
No, not as high as an impact.
People still need water.
Not to the same effect.
Utility, so it's not quite the same.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question that came, uh, just, uh, on the twenty forty model on water, is that tweaked every year or looked at as far as how the actual kind came out, or is that like a set base?
Yeah, so it, the, the model he's referring to is more on the production side, the engineering side. We look at what infrastructure we would need to, to serve future developments, and, and it's looked at every year. And it's also looked at when we have big water users who want to come connect to the city.
But you have to assume certain population.
Correct, yes.
He had, he actually uses the city's general plan and says, okay, what hasn't been developed? And what's the type of development, at least in our current.
Right.
General plan, that suggests what that would development would look like. So we kind of assume a city build-out in that twenty forty period of time. And then they, what the question is, whether we have the water rights to be able to meet those needs in the future.
So with that, that's the end of the, the enterprise fund. So our next steps, we'll be coming back on April first with a, a review of the proposed nineteen, City Manager nineteen-twenty budget. And then throughout April, uh, we will have, we'll hear from the, the departments and their budget presentations. And then we'll do a, a budget wrap-up on May sixth. And then the, a, an adoption, a tentative adoption of the fiscal year nineteen-twenty budget on May twentieth, but then also the adoption of the CIP and the rest of the final adoption in June with, along with a secondary property tax levy.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Freeman?
Chris, for the, when we start hearing from other departments, um, in talking to Councilmember Luna, you know, they're, he's forecasting the new station, uh, the new substation for PD to be built in the next four to five years or so. Uh, can we, I, I think it would benefit us to, to start looking at, um, at PD from the standpoint of what, what you were able to do with fire, um, with the analysis that you did there. Uh, couple that with PD, and then hopefully, if we have some information by April, May, when we start looking at the department, start looking at what, if any, bodies were gonna be. looking at the department, start looking at what, if any, bodies we're going to be needing to add. Because I know, you know, from, from the sales tax, those 75 officers, as, as it is, or.
Where did you get that?
Or not, what was, I can't remember now.
Bring it down, bring it down.
But, so 65 officers, sorry. You know, those, those could literally just go to fill the, the new station. And so when you start looking at other areas like heat and some of the other special, special operation units and stuff within PD, how can we start adding bodies now so that it's not a, a significant impact in four to five years?
Yep, we get it. So, thank you, Councilman Thompson. So Mayor, Councilman Thompson, what, we are having those conversations about the public safety and to your point, we've, our data scientists are migrating over to PD and we're, and they're beginning to work with them and collect the data so that we can come up with some models of deployment for police, the police department to assist the chief. And so the chief and his staff are fully engaged and Candace is sending her best and brightest over there to work with them on, on doing similar things we did with fire. In the meantime, we've also recognized that in the CIP, we've got fire stations coming on, we have a police substation coming on, those positions will be included, it's being funded by the public safety sales tax, right? So we're working both of those schedules and trying to determine with the, our estimates on the new sales tax, how fast is that going to come on, when will it be enough and how many positions we'll be able to support? And, and then trying to match that up with fire, you know, fire stations coming on and substation, on the, a fire side and then on the police side, you know, we would start hiring some of those positions. We wouldn't wait until whatever, I can't remember the year we said we're building out the substation, we need to get some of those onboard earlier. And we'll come back to the council and, and describe the types of positions that we're anticipating. Because like you said, there are some needs right now that they could begin addressing as we look forward to the substation. Now the substation, remember, we have officers already assigned in that area, they're just all down at superstition, so we don't, the chief's probably going to grimace, but I don't need a completely whole new staffing for one substation because we can obviously pull some of the existing positions. But we're going to work with them, we want to right-size that, but those are ongoing conversations we're having right now. But again, those positions would be included, covered by the public safety sales tax, that's what we anticipate. Okay?
I got one last.
Yes?
I started thinking more about having the utility conversation in the spring and I'm starting to see an issue in that if we have increased budgets, how are we going to know what that budget impact does to the actual utility rates? Isn't it relevant to have those two conversations at the same time? Like, because you say, you know, hypothetically, this year you want, you have a $300 million budget, last year, sorry, but you want to increase it to $320 million. How am I supposed to know what impact that has on the utility rates if I'm going to have that conversation six months?
Well, then if six months later the council doesn't support a rate, if you want to adjust it, then we have to reduce the budget. We don't, we have a, we have a cap on what we have to spend, that won't be, we, we can make those adjustments easily.
I'm saying if I, what if you're, you're asking to approve a budget of a fixed dollar amount, but I'm not going to have any idea what impact that budget is going to have on my utilities. I'm saying I use the budget amount to determine, I use the utility rate amount increase to determine how I feel about how much money we're spending on the budgetary side. So if I don't know how the budget is going to impact the utility rates, I find it hard to figure out how I'm going to approve or disapprove moving forward with a budget.
Sure. Well, but effectively we, we're doing that with all the funds. We don't know how much sales tax we're actually going to get, we have a projection. We can tell you what the projected rate might be for a utility rate, but again, with more time and more history, we think we can give you more accurate information. And this was also an effort to not do a rate increase for eight months and then have that conversation. And we just think it's a better time of the year to be, to applying utility rates. Other cities do this all over the valley, so we kind of saw that and we thought that that would be a good practice for us. We can suggest to you what the budgets look like and if there's, how much more revenue would have to be brought on. And if, if the rates aren't there, and the rates can be impacted not just by what the council increases the rates, it could be adjusted by utilization and what, and we have to make, we make those adjustments during the year all the time. So it's not, I mean, I, I don't want to disconnect those too much, but I think we have enough flexibility in our programming, because our rates are not going to break or make the next year's budget. What they typically do are building in the capacity to address needs not only in this year's budget, but rising debt increases or chemical increases into the future. We just want, we had been talking about this, I think I've mentioned this a few times to council, we just felt like the timing is better for the residents, for the customers, and we would present to the council a, a broad-based budget that if we need it, if we don't get the rates, if there's not rate increases, we will make those adjustments during the year. We, we always do, because we have to live within a budget.
Yeah, I'm not questioning, you can implement them in the spring if you feel that that's a fair time to implement rates. All I'm saying is if we get brought a budget and we say, well, we want to spend an additional $200 million on a Miami beach park, right? And you tell me, I need $200 million for this. In order for me to say, yes, I approve or disapprove building a $200 million beach park, I need to know what impact that's going to have on the residents in my neighborhood from a utility perspective. And if I spend a massive amount of money or if I approve to spend a massive amount of money, but I don't know what impact that's going to have until eight months later.
Well, then what would happen is then we would adjust our budget. If the council, we would probably, just like today, when we bring you the budget to approve the council, it's a not-to-exceed number. It's, because then during the year, we're adjusting that number, we never go above it, we're always bringing it back down because we're always monitoring how much revenues are coming in from building permits and sales tax. And there's times during the year, we have to tell departments, you got to slow down, we're not going to fill positions, we're going to make cuts because we already see things are changing. So it wouldn't be much different on the utility side. We would say, here's the budget, and we would probably give you at least a range in saying, yeah, if there's a significant increase in the budget, we think that these are the range of the rates that would be, maybe need to be increased. Council may express that you don't, you don't want to see rates go above a certain amount, but then the actual implementation of those rates and the discussion again would be in fall.
I'd like to just add a couple of things on that, just, you know, thinking out the, the process myself. One is when we're looking at the budget year going forward, in the projections, they're making an estimate saying, based on our past approvals, there will be like a 2% increase on the utility rates like in February. So there is the assumption of the 2% in the budget. And so when you look at your expenses and what projects are going on in that, you can also look and say, well, there's 2% built in, if we didn't have that, maybe we wouldn't do it, or would that be enough, making an assumption. I do like looking at the entire utility, since we depend so much on our utilities, looking at it as an actual figure that we finish out our year before we look at what we want to do for the next year. Because I think, from what I'm understanding, is that our current system is to look at our budget in April and assume utility rate uses and revenues during some of our highest months, which would be April, May, June. And there's a lot of assumption, I think a lot of potential fluctuation in a high usage, then making some assumptions later on in a low usage. So I like the idea of having a full year with actuals and then instead of estimating.
No, that, Councilmember Duff, that's an awesome point. And Councilman Whitaker, we won't, we'll suggest to you, here's what we think the rates are probably going to be. I mean, we, we get it, you know, we can't just go in blindly, but we'll say, if we're asking, if you see more additional rates built into the adopted budget or sources, we're going to say, we think that that's probably going to take, you know, probably a range of whatever, 1.5, 2% or something like that. So if you see a huge number, you're going to go, well, wait a minute, you know, is this, are you setting us up for a 5% increase or 6%? We'll be able to give you that thought. But we just think that giving more time, more information, and that's a good point, getting through the heavy use months, we'll have completed a full year of rates, then we'll be able to come back to council and say, here's where we think we are. We have some big projects out there. What's also driving this, one, the convenience for the customer, but for us, we've got some, we're having to kind of go, we're having some tough, tough or interesting discussions about, again, the future of our utilities and how fast growth is going to take place and what we need, what are the next round of capital projects we're going to have to come back to council with? And how can they be, can they be sustained in rate increases? And so it's kind of this balancing act that's going to take us a little bit of time to work through. And sometimes trying to cram that through this effort on the general government side is just, we don't, we can't spend as much time on it as we'd like. So separating it from the general government discussion actually helps us to kind of maybe spend more focused time just on the enterprise fund.
Yeah, I'll make one last point and then I digress, but again, if Tim Boyle brings me a project and says, I want to build a $200 million beach park.
I'm not going to pay for that from your utilities.
Well.
I know where you're going, go ahead.
You made me lose my train of thought. If somebody comes here and asks me to spend $200 million on any project and I don't know what impact that's going to have to my utility rate payers, I can't honestly make a decision on that if I don't know what impact that, that's going to have on my utility rate. And that's my only.
No, and Councilman Whitaker, if we come to you in a budget with something that's significant, I think you should ask us that question. You should, and we should be prepared to say, okay, yeah, if we're going to do this, most likely when we come to you in the fall, we can't, this is not going to be absorbed by whatever the current rates or the anticipated growth in the system, that it would take a significant impact of some kind of rate that you would, we'd be asking to adopt in the fall. I think that's a fair conversation.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
And I, I think it's good, worth pointing out that regardless, we'll have a balanced budget. We're not going to, when we allocate the funds, it's going to be based on the current revenues. And if, I think we all have a bias against, we, we want to increase utility rates as little as possible and as infrequently as possible. And so we, I think a lot of times we approach the budgeting process from a very conservative point of view. We, we like to underestimate revenues, overestimate expenditures just so that we avoid problems, and that's the way we should do it, except when it comes to utility rate increases. I think we ought to do that as a last resort. So I, I like the idea of taking as much time, studying it as long as possible, doing it as little and as infrequently as possible. So the longer we put off raising rates, the better in my mind. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mayor, that's what we had for you today. Again, this is just really the kickoff to the budget month of April. So every meeting that you have in April, we will be talking about the budget in some way, shape or form, and then wrapping it up for you in May.
Thank you very much, council. Any other questions regarding this item? All right, the next item on our agenda is acknowledge receipt of minutes and various boards and committees. They're agendized separately, so let's take them, is there a motion for agenda item 2A? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Luna, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? A motion regarding 2B? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, thank you, Mr. Luna, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Council, anything you'd like to share with us? Hearing none. Mr. Brady, can you remind us what our schedule is for future meetings?
We'll see you on Thursday, 28th, for some more interesting conversations.
Thank you. We do have scheduled an executive session. Is there a motion, is that correct, Mr. Brady? Yes, is there a motion to adjourn into a, not adjourn, but to move into an executive session? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Thompson, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. We will convene an executive session.